Row, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Milton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remarks by myself. So I just wanted to note a couple of things before we start. First, I'm pleased to note that there has been an agreement now between the Kellogg's employees and the Kellogg Company across our country and many places where they serve, but importantly here in Omaha, too. And we know that affects thousands of workers and hundreds of workers here in Omaha. So really pleased they've come to an agreement and we'll be back to work by December 27th. Secondly, I would just note this is our last council meeting of the year, so I want to thank my council members for their work in 2021. We've had a lot to do. I know we have a few weeks off here before 2022 starts. I know we have a lot more on our plate when that happens, so I encourage them and hope they have some time to rest and return refreshed and ready to work hard for the citizens of Omaha next year, as I know we will. And lastly, I just wish everyone that's here and everyone that's watching a happy holidays and a happy new year. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the East 12th Legislative Chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate your attendance here today and look forward to your testimony on our many items. I encourage you to turn your cell phones off or at least turn them to buzz or vibrate, as you may say.
Item six, the resolution to approve the preliminary plat for South Farm, replat three with a waiver to lot depth located northwest of 144th Street and Applied Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today, proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant and the developer. This is a development on the southwest corner of 144th and Pacific Street. It will be a combination of multifamily attached kind of row houses and detached single-family houses. It's going to be a gated community. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Row, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Milton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Arcadia Ridge located northwest of Kansas and Laurel Avenue's Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today, proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is at the northwest corner of Kansas and Laurel Avenue. It's a 40-acre tract of land that will be subdivided into 109 single-family lots, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on this one as well.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Row, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Milton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Deer Creek Highlands, replat one located southwest of 126 and Greby Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today, proponents, please.
Mark Westergaard with E&amp;A Consulting Group on 0909 Mill Valley Road, here on behalf of the Players Club. This is a minor replat that takes some ground, excess ground on the golf course and adds it to two separate lots, and so it's just a simple replat. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Row, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Milton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Pacific Reserve, replat one with a waiver to lot frontage located south of 206th and Pacific Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today, proponents, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. Doug Dreesen, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a development to add some amenities for preschool and grade school children, athletic facilities and gym-like facilities. And with that, I've got the owner here and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number nine? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Row, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Milton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Items 10 through 13 can be considered together for Millwork Commons located northwest of 12th and Isard Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10 in ordinance to mend the boundaries of the NCE overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 11 in ordinance to repeal the ACI-1 overlay district for this property. Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 13, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items number 10 through 13 are today, proponents, please.
Katie Underwood with Olson, 2111 South 67th Street. Civil engineer representing the applicant today. This is the block just south of the Ashton within Millwork Commons. It will be redeveloped into, it's another urban redevelopment which will include mixed-use buildings.
Thank you. Any other proponents on those items? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Row, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Milton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 14, in ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district in an R7 district located northeast of 18th and Ohio Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today, proponents.
Good afternoon, Matthew Cavanagh, Executive Director, Holy Name Housing, 4324 Fort Street. This is a project, second portion of a project we approved, you all approved a couple of weeks ago for affordable housing project that's at two locations. This is the second half, 13 units for affordable for seniors and people with physical disabilities. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 14? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Just want to thank you for bringing this addition to the area.
Yeah, certainly will help with the affordable housing issue that we're having in our community. I just wanted to thank you and I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Motion is second, roll call.
Row, Begley, Harding, Johnson, Milton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. One public hearing can be held for items 15 and 16 for Street Improvement District 2021-01. Item 15, in ordinance to create this street improvement district to improve Ridgewood Avenue from Poppleton Avenue to Pacific Street and Poppleton Avenue from Ridgewood Avenue to Loveland Drive. Item 16, a resolution to approve the City of Omaha to pay 60% of the estimated total cost of improvements for the street improvement district in an amount not to exceed $597,600.
Public hearing and vote on items number 15 and 16 are today. We'll do the public hearings together as noted by the city clerk, but I would also note that we'll take separate votes on those two items. So at this time, I'll call up proponents on number 15 and 16.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Peter Getzinski, 8086 Dorcas Street. I'm the president of the Loveland Neighborhood Association, and I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity. First point I want to make is that we are grateful to the mayor and the city council for the roadway improvement policy. Since it was implemented, I'd count at least seven streets in our neighborhood have been improved with the cooperation of the city. So this has been a big plus for us. We have really benefited from that policy. Secondly, I want to point out that this is a longstanding problem we're talking about. We were founded almost 100 years ago. The school in question was built 90 years ago. And 65 years ago, we were grateful to enter the city of Omaha. We were next at that time in 1956. These roads have never been improved to city standard. And at present, I have a few pictures I'd like to share with you in a moment, but at present, one of them is barely drivable and the other is really in very poor condition. They are not maintained for the city, by the city at this time because they're rated substandard. All right? The second, third thing I want to emphasize is that this is a unique situation. The reason this has not been addressed so far is that it takes a melding of the city, the school district, the owners and the residents to address this problem. This is a public street. These are public streets. They provide a substantial public benefit to our community, surrounding communities, and by the way, parents from many of your districts because of the opt-in policy that Westside Community Schools has. A quarter of the student body of 300 come from districts around the city, mainly, of course, from districts three and six. But we counted the number of vehicles that use these streets, more than 400 vehicle movements, I'll call them, every academic day, including five school buses, very large ones, by the way. You know, delivery vehicles, teachers, staff, parents. It's a heavily used public street. The next thing I want to say is that this is the only one, as far as I know, okay, not being omniscient, the only one of 178 school buildings, schools rather, in our city that has roads like this adjacent to it. So this is a unique situation, and I would argue your decision today to expand the city's contribution would not set a precedent because this is the exception right here. Finally, we look to you, and I know the school board looks to you to set the tone, to take leadership on this issue. Without your leadership, and I urge you to vote the 60% share, it will be very difficult, if not impossible, for us to put the financing solution together, including the school board and the owners. At your indulgence, I just want to briefly, if it's possible to do so, share these photos with you.
Yeah, you just place it up there on the flat screen and it'll pop up here in a minute.
Do I need to do something else?
Push the arm all the way up there.
There we go, okay.
A little bit further, probably.
All the way up?
Yeah.
All right.
There you go.
There we go, perfect, thank you. All right, this photo was taken some time ago, and it shows you how miserable the intersection was south of the school. That's been addressed now by a public-private partnership in our neighborhood. But this is how the school streets look today, and you can see this large ditch on the right-hand side. These bottom three photos show the problem with the temporary fixes the Westside Community Schools engages in when they pour crushed rock or gravel on the roads. The gravel just washes downhill. And you can see here how it's covering the pavement at the bottom of the hill, making walking more treacherous for children and parents who use the sidewalks. And I would also point out, there we go, these bottom photos, this is Poppleton looking west from the intersection. And we had a video presentation by WWT recently, September 21st. The reporter actually stepped into this ditch up to about his mid-calf. This ditch is so great. If you don't have a four-wheel-drive vehicle, don't drive down this road. So that's basically what I wanted to share with you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents here today that want to speak? Senator McCallister, welcome.
Thank you, members of the committee. My name is John McCallister, 8010 Hickory Street, and I'm proud to represent this area of Omaha in the Nebraska Legislature, and I am a proponent. The unimproved streets in Omaha have been a concern of mine for a long time. In fact, I drafted a bill with support of the mayor and the city council that extended the payment period for unimproved streets up to 20 years from 10 years. I also served on the mayor's roadway improvement advisory committee and helped formulate the policy that we are now discussing. You should know that the committee represented all areas of the city, and it was the full agreement of that committee that the city needed to retain the full discretionary authority to fund projects of compelling public interest but not meeting proposed private-public funding policy. That was certain, and as every member of that committee from all over the city agreed, we needed to do that for a variety of reasons. Some examples might be described as paying the full cost to pave an unimproved street that spurs development of a blighted section of the city. That was important to us and to Justin Wayne, who is also in the legislature with me. Paying the full cost, the full cost, to refurbish a street that helps small retail shops and restaurants prosper. Good example is repairing the brick streets in the old market after the recent flood. Another one, paying the full cost to repave old and dilapidated streets throughout the city. City does that now. Paying the full cost to pave a busy street that borders a school or church in an area of the city whose residents are unable to contribute to the cost of the project. That's a part of the policy. So we retain, the city retain that full authority to make those changes and deviate from the existing policy. Does this proposition before you deviate from that policy? It does. No question about it. But you need to know that we have a fragile agreement with the residents to fund the project. I sincerely believe that the street project adjacent to Loveland School is of a compelling public interest and needs to be fully funded, or at least 60% funded, by the city. Famous quote, "Politics is the art of the possible, the attainable, the art of the next best." And that's from Chancellor Bismarck, the 19th century chancellor of Germany. Some of the people here have been working for years to finish this project. Please help us finish the job. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents at this time that want to speak?
Say again?
I'm asking for other proponents. We may have some questions for you along the way.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Patty Peterson. My address is 1111 Ridgewood Avenue. My home is directly across the street on the east side of Loveland Grade School, so I am one of the residents. I am also one of the five that signed the petition to set up the SID. We have seven private residents making up these two streets along with five lots that are owned by the school. So among the seven, there were five of us that got together and had more than a majority of the lineage to be able to submit the petitions. I am a proponent, obviously. I've lived in this home for over 33 years. Of those of us that signed the petition, those, the terms of their living in their homes was between 20 and in one case, 52 years. So we've been there a long, long time. We've also seen the decline in the street with the increased traffic, as some have spoken about before. It presents a unique situation in terms of trying to come up with a way to keep, to maintain the road in a way that is acceptable to the residents, to the school and to the city. Our two blocks, as I said, are very unusual and I think present a unique proposition in terms of what we're asking here today. And again, I very much appreciate not just the opportunity to speak to you, but also Councilman Begley's proposed resolution with respect to a cost sharing of 60% by the city. I hope you don't think me ungrateful when I give you my next comments, but in looking at the resolution, the 60% is wonderful. Putting a cap of, I believe the number was 597,600, becomes problematic. That number appears to be based on the very preliminary assessment of what the project would cost and that the number that was given to us in our application for the SID. We're told in that application that it's just a conceptual assessment of the cost and that it's just a very, very basic overview and that in all likelihood, the cost will go higher. As I looked through the city's policy in terms of the 50% cost sharing, nowhere does it talk about a cap. It says 50% of the cost is paid by the city, 50% shared between the city and the residents, and that was clearly stated in the materials that were given to us when we went door-to-door to collect signatures for the petition. So again, I'm thrilled that we're considering 60% and would urge your support of that, but to place a cap on that number that's based on this very, very preliminary assessment of what it's going to cost, since we won't have final numbers until past the protest period, I would urge you to consider not including a cap, or if you must include a cap, that it at least be a number that might be a little bit in excess of this very, the number that we're concerned is not reflective of what the cost may be. Again, I very much appreciate all your support, your consideration of this. We'd really like to come up with a solution. As Senator McCallister mentioned, we've been working on this for a number of years. I found a memo in my stack from like, you know, 2008 where we tried to start this process and it just, we got to a point where we've got the number of private landowners ready to participate and support this, but we're looking to some relief both from the city and we'll be talking and have been talking to the school district as well. Appreciate it. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if I mentioned at least two, three. Three of our petitioners are actually retirees, so we're not talking about people that have, if you've looked at any of the information, the wherewithal to write a check in some cases for $54,000 would be their assessed cost for this project if we just went the 50/50. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Hi, my name is Karen Wagner. I live at 3517 South 105th Street. I am a proponent for the Street Improvement Initiative. As everybody else has said, this is an incredibly unique situation, and it's important to me because there's children's safety involved. I don't know that those pictures gave a clear picture, but I went to Loveland, my daughter went to Loveland. It's like a, I mean, it's legitimately incredibly scary, especially when you have children who are neuro-nontypical and you have wheelchairs and you have different access from different vehicles. And if you see the streets, you understand the safety issues have always been my concern. There are zero opponents here today and multiple proponents in attendance, and I believe that this proposal deserves unanimous support. My concern is mayoral override, which would leave all of this decades of work gone and leave our children kind of left behind, forgotten, safety. We're here today in front of our city, asking you for a one-time consideration based on an incredibly unique set of circumstances. You hold the discretionary decision-making power, and in this situation, I am asking you unanimously to exercise that power. We are not setting a precedent. This is not something that is going to come before the council, years and years and years, lots of different people. This is about the safety of children. This is residents, your constituents, who have been working on this for decades to get it done. I'm asking you for a unanimous yes vote today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Hello. See, well, I am Carolyn Roder. I live at 8064 Gold Street. I am a Loveland Elementary School parent. This is my son, Guyver. He's the reason I drive and walk on these streets daily. Loveland is an excellent school and my son is thriving thanks to the dedicated staff. My concern is for the safety of pedestrians, the lack of handicap accessibility and damage to our vehicles via unavoidable potholes. This project is decades overdue. I'm asking that you approve the 60% cost share because of the unique circumstances surrounding this public school. This will ease the financial burden of the adjacent neighbors and help nearly everyone in our community have a safer experience on these streets. Thank you, Councilman Begley, for bringing this issue to the table and for standing with us from the beginning, and thank you all in advance. What do you want to say?
Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Hello, my name is Sarah Acapul, and I live in the Westside District 66 area. My husband and I moved there nine years ago, and did I say my address? 8104 Walnut Circle.
Thanks.
And I am a proponent of this proposal. I just want to say two points, that my friend and I walk three miles every day, every morning in our neighborhood, and we walk down Poppleton Street, which he showed on the screen, with two dogs, and I sort of trust the dog to find the easiest way, and there's not very many easy ways down that street on foot. And I'm very concerned of anybody who's unfamiliar with the district, and if they go down that street at night, I think you're talking a lot of damage to the car or an accident or them literally getting stuck and high-centered. I cannot imagine driving down it. My other concern is that Loveland, or Ridgeway in front of the school, the main access to the school, has a sidewalk on both sides of the street, a very short street. And one of the sidewalks is like a 65% incline where all of the gravel that Westside School District may put on the street goes straight down this incline or decline, and kids have to walk down that. And let alone someone at my age trying to walk down that sidewalk, I can't imagine kids having, you know, talking and doing other things, not paying attention, walking down that. It's like a three-foot stretch of sidewalk at that particular area with the gravel. I think it's extremely dangerous to ask our children to have to walk to school how many times, or twice a day and be exposed to those sidewalks. And so I'm very concerned about safety for residents, visitors and the schoolchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Ryan Palmer, 1326 Ridgewood Avenue. I love you guys. You're my favorite TV show. I watch you every week, and if I'm not there to watch it live, I record it and watch it. I appreciate your service, I appreciate the job you have to do, and I'm one of those people who's paying attention. I tell you that for context. I also tell you, 1326 Ridgewood Avenue, I'm like six houses south of this problem. I avoid this street every single day. I think it's funny that we have to sit here and come down here and lobby to get you guys to spend an extra $100,000 to fix this obviously horrible problem street in our city. this obviously horrible problem street in our city. And in a few minutes, it's going to be like nothing to approve two $6 million marketing contracts to bring people to our city. Okay, I think your taxpayers would rather you spend the money to fix the streets and worry about bringing people to our city later. I think that you're going to have lots of taxpayers benefiting from the money you spend on this street. And it pales in comparison to the amount of money we're spending to try to bring people to the street or to this city. And then when they drive on our streets, they don't want to come back because our streets are so horrible. This is an opportunity where you guys can really make a difference. And, and you can be responsible for improving a major street problem. I appreciate that you have a job to do. I know you have tough decisions to make. I know sometimes you have to make exceptions to the rule. I don't, I hope that you don't get so caught up in the posture of saving money or being cautious about a precedent or whatever the excuse is. I don't even understand why there would be opposition to public funds being used for this, especially when it's, we need a little extra public funds to get the job done. You've heard about how bad and otherwise hopeless this situation is. You've heard about how unique this problem is and why it won't work without your help. Out of 178 elementary schools, this is the only one with a PESER rating that condemns the street. And it's where we have pickup and drop-off for elementary school kids. That gravel, gravel is a real issue. And we were told when we formed the SID just south of here, that Public Works would be cleaning up that gravel, no problem. Yep, once your, once your street's paved and has gutters and, and curbs, you're going to get regular street maintenance. It's, it's on the city. Okay, well, that gravel is always there. It's on the crosswalks. It's in the intersection. And not if, but when, someone's going to get seriously injured from that. And I don't know what the city's exposure to liability is when Public Works can't get there to clean up the gravel. I mean, I know we're short on, I know we're short on Public Works workers. We have lots of vacancies in that department for the last three years. So, I don't, I don't think it makes sense to, to keep adding work to theirs. We should just solve this problem once and for all with paved street with an extra $100,000 or however much it's going to be. You've heard that it's taken years for the Neighborhood Association to get this close to a workable solution. The property owners are here for the first time in history, willing to pony up a significant amount of money. But without your help, it's going to be an unreasonable expense to each property owner. If, if you do your thing, my understanding is that it's going to be about $14,000 per person. And if you look back, the other SIDs, typically the, the property owners are paying 10, 12, maybe $13,000 apiece. This just gets it down to where it's even comparable to the other SIDs that have already gone through here. Without your help, it's going to be like twice as much per property owner. And I wouldn't blame them if they dissolve it. And then we'd be back to zero. And it's your fault. The school is normally tax exempt to these kinds of things. But they're willing to come to the table. They're willing to work for a compromise to get something done here because they recognize what a problem it is. Councilmember Begley, bless his heart, is proposing that the city comes up with an additional 10% of public cost share when the public use and public benefit is obvious. You have hundreds and hundreds of cars every day that are the public coming through there. There's way more public use on this street than these property owners who are going to flip the bill are going to use it. So, now you seven elected officials, you have the keys in your hands to make this deal work. Your vote for this amendment, you vote for this amendment and you are all on record voting for fixing one of our most horrible and hopeless street problems. And then you hand the keys to the mayor. And she gets to decide. Does she want to take this opportunity to support a compromise that finally solves the impossible problem with one of the most horrible streets or slap a veto on it despite virtually no opposition? Please do the positive thing here. Let this decades-long saga end on a positive note where the neighborhood, the school, the adjacent property owners, the city council, the mayor, the Public Works all came together and compromised to finally fix these streets.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Begley, you're recog- oh, sorry. Didn't see you.
Lower, lower that.
Yeah, didn't see you stand up there.
Thanks, sir. You can see the audience. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm opposed to this because I don't think the citizens understand the process. And we have a state senator here. Everybody I've heard here sound to me like opponents. But they come up here as a proponent. Do they understand the rules? They're really supposed to wait if they're going to oppose it. But by the things that they said, it sounds to me like they're opponents. And the last gentleman maybe went over five minutes. A lot of times when I come up here and I'm slightly off-topic, as he was, and I get kicked out or I get interrupted. Now, I'm, I'm making a public complaint today because under the Open Meetings Act, if I do not, I may not be able to file a lawsuit. Mr. Ernie Chambers threatened you last week with a lawsuit. I'm not really threatening it. I'm just saying, under the Open Meetings Act, that's not reasonable rules. Apparently, you have sole discretion on who you let talk, how you let talk, what you let them say or don't say. And every one of you that sit there and let those things violate the Open Meetings Act, Mr. McCollister might know about that, stand to be also charged with a misdemeanor, a felony three or a felony two, if you do not act at the same meeting that I am. That's not really a totally reasonable rule either for citizens that are supposed to be able to come down here and petition their government. You need to review the rules. You need to discuss it with the, with the clients, we who elected you, instead of not having two-way conversations. Only if you want to have two-way conversations, you can. But we cannot. We can only come up here and express our frustration with a little tone of voice or whatever. You have sole discretion right there of saying, oh, he's off, he's off-topic by two centimeters or two millimeters and he's out of here. And I also think it's an unreasonable rule to have a taxpayer-funded deputy at your disposal to walk me out of here for expressing my discontent. That costs out of money out of my billfold and their billfold. He's here to protect everybody. But he's obligated to do that by law. He's not obligated by law to follow your admonition to get that guy out of here and out completely of the building. Those rules need to be changed. Somebody will sue you one day. Why should we spend our money and taxpayer, other taxpayers' money to sue you to get reasonable rules? Douglas County Attorney and the Nebraska Attorney General should be here for a two-way discussion on the rules, what is reasonable in their eyes and what isn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents, number 15 and 16? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Peter, can you come down for a moment, please?
Yes, sir.
And read your name and address for the record again.
Peter Gadzinski, G-A-D-Z-I-N-S-K-I, 8086 Dorcas 68124.
Thanks, Peter. Do you have those pictures with you?
I do.
You can put back up.
As he's doing that, Peter and I met several times on this. One was back in, I think it was early July. In a second meeting we had down here with our staff on September the 7th. And the description around that school, so, a lot of people in this town know the roads are terrible. The city's got a $200 million bond to fix them. This road here is around a school, as Peter did a good job describing. And the pictures, several of us up here I know have driven around that. And your description, Peter, that you need a four-wheel-drive truck, which I have, it's, the pictures really don't do justice around this. And, and being in that neighborhood, when I campaigned and, and when I've driven around here and met your Neighborhood Association out there and saw it, it really is an issue to me where there's a cost share, there's skin in the game for everyone. You're asking the city to pay an extra 10%. And I know by way of history, it was zero. So, I know the past council addressed that where the city now pays up to 50% if there's, the Street Improvement District formed. And you can address some of these problems as your neighborhood did. And I'll commend you, Peter, on organizing the folks in that neighborhood to try to get progress on this. So, you did a survey on your own. You said there's 400 cars a day that go through there. More than 400 vehicle movements a day. Yes, that's right. And that road, how long have you been trying to get this issue fixed? Well, I've only lived here since 2007. So, I'll defer to those who've lived here longer. But it's, those roads have never been brought to the city standard. And we've been part of the city for 65 years. So, that's all I can say. It's never happened. In, in this process, you've obviously talked to me several times. Yes. I met your group. You've have Senator McCollister here today, who's your elected state representative. And people in your neighborhood that also were impacted testimony today. And, and in my view, what I heard earlier were people that were in support of this. They weren't opposed, at least from my ears when I was hearing what their testimony was. So, as we go forward on this and we discuss it today, that road around there, and I know in my district, there's a lot of roads and everybody's district where the roads are bad. And this is a case where I think the city, in this amendment that I made to try to get an additional share, I know the question always is, how much does it cost and how are you going to pay for it? Fair questions. I look at it that it's an issue we can fix around, a unique place here, like you said, around a school. And it's been like that for years. So, I'll, unless you had any other comments to make, I'd like to ask Heather a couple of questions if she's back there. I just want to say, a lot of people have been involved in this, Councilman. I've acted as a catalyst, but there've been a number of residents and of course, State Senator McCollister, who have been really instrumental in bringing this issue forward. Thank you. Is Heather here somewhere? There she is.
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works.
Heather, thanks for your time today. So, can you just walk through the simple process of how, when we had that meeting, just so when people are listening in, they understand how that Street Improvement District, if you can just give me a basic understanding of how that works for people listening today?
Sure. So, per the policy for neighborhood roadways, a Street Improvement District is formed when 50% of the property owners of a budding taxable frontage to the project petition the city in favor of creating the district. So, that's the question that's before you in the first item today, is do we create that district? And a majority of taxable property owners have already petitioned the city saying, yes, we want this done.
Okay. And there was talk about if the cost is what you estimated at today, talk about that off-ramp in the process going forward. If the SID, the Street Improvement District, is formed, talk a little bit about that process down the road a little bit if the costs are a little higher than they thought.
So, the, the way we work this with the neighborhood is that there are several estimates that are consistently revised. So, what was provided to the property owners at the time that they petitioned was what we call a preliminary estimate based on city construction costs over the course of the past few years of these types of projects, plus work order histories and a tabletop assessment of condition. We have an engineer that goes through and creates this preliminary estimate. So, it's a little bit more refined than just a general ballpark number, but it's certainly not the most final number. So, that's, it's giving the, the residents petitioning an idea of the scale of the cost that they would be facing if they moved forward with this process. As the process continues to move forward then, if we create this, and then subsequently, there is a 30-day protest period that the residents would have an option to change their minds or if properties were to change hands in the interim, there could be a, a formal petition against. So, that's kind of the first off-ramp, as, as you called it, to allow property owners to change their mind. In this specific case, I know that there has been some discussion with the school district as a benefited entity that will be assessed regarding their cost share with the property owners. And I know that's an important decision-making point. So, at the department level, we have basically held back that resolution to start that protest period to allow the property owners to see what happens at council today, to take a look at their situation, to talk with the school district. And then after the holidays, we'll put that before you to basically create that opportunity or that first off-ramp for, for folks to change their mind. If that moves forward, if we make it through that 30 days, then the engineers will have the opportunity to either contract out or work in-house a design, a full engineered design for this roadway. At the end of that process, we will have a final engineer's estimate. And that is a very tailored number. It's kind of what we call the number folks can hang their hat on. We share that with the property owners. So, again, they kind of know what to plan for. And then we put that out for public bid. That's kind of the, the, the big test as far as what the contracting community is willing to build this project for. And before that contract is awarded, we bring that recommendation to you. So, that's kind of that second off-ramp. If you as a body, working with the neighborhood, decide that that cost, that final construction cost is too high, you have a right not to award that project. The last kind of situational off-ramp or, or decision-making process is at the very end of the construction process. If the neighborhood or individuals feel that the recommendation methodology for how we broke down the assessment for each individual property was incorrect, then there's a hearing at the very end of that process to try and correct that. So, there's several gates at which we are communicating with the neighbors and all parties involved, including you, the sitting city council, as to what those costs will be, how they've escalated or de-escalated, and what the impacts to the neighborhood and to the city with its cost share would be.
Okay. Appreciate your help on this. And you've been a great asset, obviously, for the city as we walk through this process with Peter's Neighborhood Association and myself with the help of our staff. I got a question for Public Works.
And he'll, he's probably better off answering these.
Who's that? Jim Tyler?
Where you at?
Okay. Hide behind me. Jim, can you briefly, or Todd, just explain why the road is like that today, kind of the process in the past, before we got here with the condition, why it wasn't fixed by the city?
Sure. Todd Fitzpatrick, Public Works. So, it's called an unimproved road. So, when it was created, and we have lots of them in Omaha, they were never built to an engineered standard. They were, they were put in with an asphalt road with no base, no drainage, no curb and gutters, things like that. The city doesn't currently have a mechanism to go back. Right now, if you want to build a new SID, you have to build roads to city standards. You do not have a choice in the matter. That was not always the case. So, this road was built during a time when you did not have to build that road to the city standard. So, when the annexation took place, the city doesn't have a mechanism to go back and rebuild hundreds of miles of streets to bring them up to city standards. They just are what they are. And so, this was always, and still is by state statute, the responsibility of the adjacent landowner until the city created the policy that we did years ago to pay 50%.
Okay. And assuming this goes forward, appreciate that explanation. So, let's say this is moves forward. And what does that mean to the city then if concrete is poured? Explain that process if it, if it's approved, what that means for these property owners there and the people driving through there, as far as the maintenance goes?
Well, it's now an engineered system. So, we now have drainage. We have storm sewer drainage to get the water underground into pipes where it doesn't do erosion or cause problems. And essentially, it's now an engineered system. And essentially, it's now an engineered system, so the city will maintain that street for the life of the street.
Okay. Thanks, Todd. That's all the questions I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Melton. You're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Oh. Sorry, I, I can wait. Yeah, I was just calling him. I'm, I'm sorry.
Todd Fitzher, Public Works.
Sorry, you're very popular. So we've done, Todd, can you give us an estimate? I mean, I know over my eight years, and this was a problem I learned about over eight years ago. And I don't have very many in my, in, in my district currently, but I know I've worked with other neighborhoods. And the one that comes to mind, that I know we started working on five years ago, and it was in Keystone. And we, they, we finally just got that road completed. Mr. Festerson then came on and we redistricted. I mean, that's how long ago it was, and I was working on it. Then Mr. Festerson came in and started working on it. And I guess, I think these roads, I completely, wholeheartedly supported doing a city policy when we did that. I know that Senator McCollister was on the committee with some other senators, neighborhood leaders. And I want to say, it took us about a year and a half, I think, to get this policy drafted, many, many meetings by the committee. I see Mr. Senator McCollister shaking his head. And we've, and then we finally got to this policy, we accepted and adopted the policy. And there have been a number of people, even in this neighborhood, I think there are people sitting in this room, that paid the 50 percent. And just last, I think last week, or within the last month, we approved, the people in Keystone, whose home values are actually less than this, paid the 50 percent. So, and they, I mean, they, they just did it. So I wholeheartedly support the city's contribution to these roads. I wholeheartedly support getting these roads up to city standards. But is there any way we can go back then and give, give the people who just paid the 50 percent over the last two years, an extra 10 percent? I'm, I'm just thinking of fairness and equity in what we've done.
I think you might be asking the wrong person. I don't know if there's a way we can go back and retroactively pay folks that have done this. But you are correct, since the policy has been passed, it's, it's always been funded at 50 percent.
And I don't, and maybe this needs to go. So Jim, or even Steve Curtis, jump in. For purposes of funding, what's the budget that we have for unimproved streets?
It's $6 million in the CIP every year. Steve Curtis.
Your name, sir? Thank you.
Steve Curtis, Finance Department.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. And we have multiple projects. And Todd, do you know how many we've done in just the last year or two? Maybe Heather would know that.
Heather, do you have a number?
So we have completed.
Could you state your name?
Oh, sorry, that's right. Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works. We have completed, I think, 11 street improvement districts, and then quite a few road maintenance districts as well, since we kind of saw this process reestablish itself in 2015.
Right.
And in the last couple of years, we've, we've seen a, a little bit of a peak at the beginning, and, and it's kind of tapering off to about two or three a year.
And I think we just did, we just did some roads in Rock Brook in the last year, is that right? And then some other roads here in the, in this area.
Correct.
We've done a number of those. And they were all funded at 50 percent?
With the exception of one stretch of Ridgewood that was amended before the policy took place. So since the policy took place.
Right. But I think that also, there was an, there was, there was an extra expenditure because they had to go with a much bigger pipe, and it had to do with the sewer system.
That's correct. There were extenuating sewer system issues with that one, yes.
Do we have any of that here, in this case?
No, we do not. Furthermore, the policy contemplates situations such as extended pipe size or, or other extenuating circumstances, and allows for that differential to automatically be covered by the city.
Okay. So I, and I, I love to see all these roads getting done. I've had people stop me that I've seen around and saying that they're really grateful and glad that we started contributing 50 percent and they got their roads done.
That's correct.
And, and everybody's been very happy with the roads that have been done. I guess my concern is just, all of a sudden, we're now going to give somebody else, we're going to pick a favorite here and give somebody extra when we just told the people in Keystone that they didn't get it. So I guess that's, or Rock Brook, or some of the other roads. That, that's my concern. If we want to change the policy, I think maybe we reconvene the committee, start having the meetings, and then you make a movement to change the policy, not just pick winners and losers. Because I certainly don't want to be the one that has to walk back into Keystone and say, oh, by the way, we didn't ask for 60 percent for you, too bad, but we gave it to somebody else down the street. I just, in fairness and equity, I don't, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with that. If we want to change the policy, I think there's a way to do that. And the council has done it before. And I think bringing in neighbors and stakeholders and Public Works and the mayor, and the mayor's office, is probably the best way to do it, not just on an ad hoc basis of who we want to favor.
Did you hear the testimony?
Thank you.
Sir. Thank you. Mr. Plermell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So unapproved roads, right? Unapproved roads. Everybody knows about them. North, south, east, and west, in the city we live in, I have them, Juanita has them, Brinker has them in Elkhorn. They're not going away, but it's our job to try to figure out how we're going to fix them. So we all continuously work up here on this council. And one of the first things I ever asked for, which is still in my office, is a map of unapproved roads. When I was first elected, it's still hanging. And unfortunately, I haven't crossed off as many as I thought I would have been able to by this point in time. But we are further along than we once were, because before we had the option for this cost share, we didn't pay anything. And I thought that was wrong. I thought, we as the city of Omaha, these are our roads, no matter if they're gravel, asphalt, concrete, we should be able to take care of them. And if we can't, then maybe we should slow down a little bit. And if you look at the city, in every single department, and I'm not going to go off rail, but it, it seems like we are to that point where we can't take care of what we have. So we have to think outside the box and figure out what we're going to do. So what I've done, and I continue to do, is I knock on doors, just like we all do. Events, functions, what we do. For these people that live on unapproved roads, and it hasn't changed, it's, it's broken down, at least in my district this way, there's a third of the people who absolutely love the unapproved roads. They absolutely love them. It slows people down, it keeps people away, and, and they like that. They like that uniqueness of it. There's a third of the people that say, fix my roads, right? I don't care what it's going to take, but fix my roads. But what everybody has to remember is, there's a lot of people that don't have the luxury to be able to pay money to fix their roads. Even with the 50 percent, we could give certain parts of this community 90 percent back. And I promise you, if they have an extra $2,000 or $3,000, they're not putting it into their road. It's just not feasible for them. It's not going to happen. And, and the last third, they say, just fix that one hole, and we're good. But we don't do that anymore either. But we will go out, hopefully, a couple times a year and pulverize it, you know, with a petition process. So I always tell people, unimproved roads, yes, they shouldn't be that way, but I promise you, it's still today, a third, a third, and a third. So we find ourselves here today with one of those thirds. And before we paid nothing, we had a little bit in the budget, and I think even just a, a few years ago, it was $300,000. And anybody that can fathom the cost of concrete or asphalt with a construction company, a few hundred thousand dollars doesn't get you much. A block, a block and a half, depending on what you have to work with. And depending on whether you go the RMD or the SID route. So I fought for more money, and luckily, the voters in the city passed a bond for $200 million to allow more money to go into this budget of unapproved roads. And the question was already asked and answered. It's $6 million now. We have $6 million compared to $100,000, just a matter of a handful of years ago, that we can put towards that third. So you, you think this would be easy, and you think it only is going to cost 10 percent more. But as I sit up here, and I know where a large portion of this $6 million goes, it goes to them high-poverty areas. It goes back to that part of where I was telling you, where people can afford to fix their roads, the Magic City, South Omaha. No offense to Loveland, but they've had unapproved loads, roads far longer than this stretch. Maybe not as heavily traveled nowadays, but I'm sure at one time, there was. And I can think of schools in my district that maybe not on the direct adjoining road, but certainly to get away from the school, that you still have unapproved roads. So what's the answer? It's tough for me to sit up here and take 10 percent away from those who can't afford anything. And that's the dilemma I face, right? This is a no-brainer. Oh, 10 percent, you got it. Fix your road. I've been down that road, it's terrible. It, but it's not the only road in that area that's bad. Some of them have been fixed over time. But I have to ask myself, am I willing to take it away from those areas of the city that can no way pay to fix their own roads? And I'm not, not penalizing those who have the, the means to, to pay. I mean, that's great, right? That's why we all live in America, do what you want, and, and hopefully have the money. And if you don't, you don't. But there's another part of it, where if we're not advocating for those who can't take care of themselves, then, then we failed the whole system. So I'm going to continue to listen, but I also know, this is just another step in the process. And it's easy for me to say, well, 10 percent, $100,000, I'll advocate harder, I'll get more money in the budget, and maybe take it up along with the mayor, because the mayor was a big part of putting the $6 million in the budget, to work with her to get seven or eight million. And then maybe we can absorb some of these unique cases where there's a school, and there's kids, and, you know, maybe the situation's less desirable than it should be. But I'm going to listen to the, the couple other lights and, and think about that decision I have to make. Keep in mind, this won't be the last step. If it comes back in front of us, say if it's passed today, and it comes back in front of us, and I'm thinking in my head, $100,000, okay, I, I can work with that. But if it comes back and it's much more, then I have to look my constituents in the eye and say, I know you can never afford to fix that, and I surely didn't help to do that, and that's just not what I'm willing to do at this point. But I do have a question for Heather, because I know she hasn't been up here much, and she's got lots of knowledge, she would like to tell us about unapproved roads.
Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works.
So we heard the number of requests, I think, that we've had. And I will tell you, we used to talk about RMDs and SIDs all the time. And this is the, the first one I remember the conversation about in a while. So, and it's, it's a tough question, but maybe you have the answer. Out of the $6 million in the budget, we set aside for this particular road that nobody likes, well, a third don't like. How much did we spend of that last year?
Of the $6 million, how much did we spend last year?
Or maybe the year before as well?
That would be a reconciliation, and I'd have to.
It'd be a tough question.
Finance. I mean, we could get you that number, but we'd have to, we'd have to drill the fund to see.
Do you think we spent it all, or do you think there's money left in there?
I, I honestly, I don't account that fund, so I wouldn't know the answer to that.
Director Curtis, tough question, but there is a reason for it.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. We don't carry forward anything from unspent funds in that particular line item, but we could get you a reconciliation of how much was spent each of those years.
Do you recall if last year, we spent the whole $6 million for unapproved roads?
I don't. I can find out for you.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I guess it'd only be one year back. And the reason I'm asking is because if they said, hey, you know what, we just couldn't find enough contractors to do it, and we had a few hundred thousand left, there you go. But I have a feeling that with the amount of unapproved road lane miles we have, there's probably just as many requests as there is funds to pay for it. So I'm going to, I'm going to keep listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Heather, or Todd, I had a question on the, the percentage of, of frontage that each, or is this being done by winterfoot or by number of lots?
We have presented both potential assessment cases to the property owners. That determination by default from the department is by number of owners. However, by their request, we did present them with both numbers. Up until we get the case ready for Board of Equalization, the, the neighborhood could come to a consensus around frontage or by property, and, and we could carry either of those forward to, to the Board of Equal.
So I've, I've heard some numbers bandied about as to what percentage of certain property owners would have. I think one of the school district, which has said it will participate at some level if this does go forward. I believe I've, I've heard their share would be somewhere around 23 percent, or somewhere in that neighborhood. Is that?
So.
No, not 30.
So the calculation by frontage, I think, brought it to around 25-ish percent. By even split, it's probably closer to the 23-ish, based on a 50 percent cost share as outlined in policy.
Okay. That's, all right. I want to make sure that was on the record. Because I, I have had some conversations both with the superintendent for SC 66, as well as some of the board members as well, too. And I know, and the reason I bring part of this up is because I know there's been some information distributed that seems to imply that, that 66 would agree to 30 percent funding if the, if the city were to increase their percentage of the funding as well, too. And the, the board, I know the board has taken no action on this. And I know it's been stated that they're kind of waiting for us, the city, to make that first step. But in, in my conversations with some of the board members and the superintendent, I get the, I get the sense that they are willing to be participants in this, but only to the level as to which, you know, they, their, their frontage would suggest that they would be participating to, or at least to that level. So the other thing, I've, I've talked, and I've met with, with Peter and Senator McCollister and others, some of the neighbors along the way as well, I've, I've said, look, I would remain open-minded to this, as well as, but you have to, I think you have to have a compelling reason as to, to why. And I, I think you've heard other council members state why this isn't necessarily anything really different than circumstances that exist around the rest of our city as well, too, in certain areas. So I don't believe that that standard, or that benchmark has been reached. I also think, has, has been previously, previously stated, that for the city to change its policy a number of years ago, to change it from 100 percent of the property owner's responsibility, and, and even some of this information that was, was distributed to, where it, it says that, you know, that the original developers of this area did not, there was, there was no street calculation, or there was no contribution in the, in the lot development to a city's standard street. And that's, you know, obviously, the, the reason we, we sit here today. There are others in the, in the neighborhood who have done SIDs, and they paid, they, they were able to take place or take a part of that, that cost sharing. But I, I think for the city to, to step up to the 50 percent level and have the school participating to its level, I think is more than reasonable and, and, and fair to the other SIDs and, and RMDs, really, that have taken place, those projects that have taken place in the recent past and going forward. I, I think we need to make sure that we are not by setting a de facto precedent of 60 percent at this, at this meeting. So I will be supportive of, of the formation of the SID, but I will also be supportive of, of the city's contribution of 50 percent.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. And listening to my colleagues here, several that have been here longer than I have. have and being educated on the process of how this has worked. Uh, I also spoke to Senator McCallister, had good conversation with him, which I always appreciate. My friend giving me some advice and some counsel on things that are in your district. And also Dr. Lucas, one of our staff and I had talked to him in the past, and I've talked to my colleagues about this. And at the end of the day, the reason I went forward with this, understanding again, the roads in this town are a challenge. We all know that. And there was a, a group that came together that wanted to get a partnership. And to me, when you have people want to put skin in the game with partnerships with District 66, the property owners in the city, I understand we're asking for more and there's other roads in this ci, in, in our districts that are bad. I felt compelled with Peter and his group that formed, had a meeting and, well, they formed way before I was in the council. But when I listened to my constituents in that group, I would love to do it everywhere, but, but I'm comfortable again with what's written here today is, um, I appreciate Peter again coming down and Senator McCallister and others. But I, I just wanted to make clear that this is a partnership where it's not just a city doing it. There's others that will have skin in the game to try to fix this problem again. It's a unique situation as it has been discussed earlier where there's a school and there's cars that go through there. 400 is what Peter counted. I have no reason not to believe him. But since it was a school and a unique spot there, that's why I'm comfortable with this motion today.
Thanks. Thank you. I'll just add, uh, before I, we will take a motion on 15 and 16 that, um, I recently spoke to a group of students at Loveland Elementary, so I was pleased to see that involvement here today. Really impressive group of kids. And I recently drove the street as well and it is terrible. And I can see why it's a big challenge and big concern to the neighborhood. And in many ways Loveland, the Loveland neighborhood was ground zero on this issue when we started on the street improvement district, uh, policy and having those discussions. And in, in my area, it's mostly Keystone, Penny Park and Florence, but I have several that have come through and are still on the way to come through to the council with this new, uh, street improvement district process. And it can be clunky and frustrating and I, I wish we could support all of them at 100%. I frankly think the city should be doing that, but that number is astronomical, estimated to be about $300 million. I also want to acknowledge Senator McCallister here. I appreciate his involvement and I, I spoke with you as well about this issue as well as your involvement in the policy itself, helping to form that policy, uh, when that came together with the mayor. And then following through to also enact that legislation you mentioned to allow a 20-year payment schedule in some cases. That has made it more possible for many neighborhoods to afford something like this, even when we're talking about the 50% match. And so that's, that's been very helpful too. And I was on the council in the adjacent area, uh, to this street, was given the 60% waiver. Um, my recollection is the same as Ms., as Ms. Tippi Pierce outlined that that was done prior to having a policy and also because of a really abnormal sewer issue we had there, which we thought was convincing at the time. And it does look good. It has been a major improvement for the neighborhood there. But what is different now, I think, is that we do have this policy in place now. And so I understand some of the reluctance that's being expressed by some council members here today. I also understand Councilman Bagley's interest in advocating for this. He's advocating for his constituencies and, and what is a difficult situation. So I appreciate that too. As has been noted, the process is we have number 15 and number 16 on separate votes. Number 15 would be to create the SID itself, and I would suggest we take that first. Uh, there's no further lights, so I would see if there's a motion.
Motion to accept number 15.
Motion to second on number 15. Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved 7 to 0.
Motion approved number 16.
His motion in a second to approve number 16. No further lights. Roll call.
Roe.
No.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
No.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
Motion fails 3 to 4. Item 17, an ordinance reauthorizing the Old Town Elkhorn Business Improvement District.
Public hearing on vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Endemash.
Bernard Endemash, Deputy City Attorney, not necessarily a proponent, uh, but I wanted to make it clear in case anybody was here, cause I've had a couple of questions about it. Uh, this particular ordinance before you basically removes the sunset clause that existed in the Elkhorn Business Improvement District ordinance when it was created in 2016. It had a five-year life. According to that ordinance, it ended at the end of 2021. The purpose of this ordinance doesn't change anything at all, other than remove the sunset clause and it would allow the Elkhorn Business Improvement District to continue in its present form, uh, in the near future. There may be amendments in the future, but that's obviously not the issue before you. So I just wanted to make that clear in the event that anybody was here and had any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents on number 17 today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Jay McArdle with McArdle Grading Company. Address is 20460 Ohio Street. I'm sorry, I couldn't really hear when he was speaking. Uh, did he say the purpose? Uh, I want to clarify, the purpose was to remove the sunset clause?
Yes.
Okay. I'll stand up here as an opponent. Strictly from the fact, I'm, I'm a fifth generation to live in the Elkhorn area, a third generation business owner in downtown Elkhorn. The reason I'd like to, um, oppose this on behalf of our company is, um, specifically because we are included in this downtown business improvement district. We sit on a dead-end street. This dead-end street receives, even though it's within the business district, um, it receives no, um, streetscape improvements of any kind. We have actually paid for, um, street improvements ourselves out of our own pocket in front of our, front door of our business. And also, uh, so there's basically two, two streets that dead-end there in, in an L shape. Because of the way that our business lies, we have significant frontage. Therefore, we do put forth a significant amount of money towards this business improvement district and one of those streets is not even paved. It is a gravel road, um, of which we maintain ourselves. So, um, I guess my, my opposition to this is that, um, removing the sunset clause will cause my business, who provides jobs to people, is not a storefront business, by the way. I don't get walk-in customers buying merchandise. I'm a contractor, um, so I go out in the city and, uh, work on construction projects. So the funds that we have to pay towards these downtown improvements, um, come out of our pocket as opposed to helping us move our business forward when they don't do street improvements, don't do anything to attract business to McArdle Grading Company. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'm open for questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other opponents to number 17? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just, I was going to reiterate what, uh, Mr. Endemash had indicated that, uh, this is really, it's not expanding the, the boundaries of the BID and it's, it's a business improvement district. There have, the, the funds generated by that go to, uh, a number of different, um, issues or, um, things that are, uh, including streetscaping, not necessarily street improvements, um, which is, uh, just did one on, on Main Street, which I think was, been, uh, meant a great deal for downtown Elkhorn. So this, this does remove the sunset on it. It doesn't, to Mr. McArdle's, um, maybe concern is if they're in the future, it can be revoked. It would have to be done obviously by ordinance, but, um, if there's an amendment to the, the boundaries, uh, that's something that can also be addressed at that time as well too. But I think that the initial, um, uh, goals of, of the, the BID, uh, have been successful and I think they wanted to continue those going forward and, and so I'll be supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that a motion? Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Roe.
Yep.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved 7 to 0. Item 18, to consider a Class C liquor license for Get Real Sandwiches located at 3901 Farnham Street, Sweet B.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here to answer, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved 7 to 0. Item 19, to consider a Class I liquor license for Holiday Inn Express and Suites located at 17677 Wright Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 are today. We have the applicant by Zoom, Tasha Kelly. We'll get you off mute here in a second.
Hello, can you hear me?
Got you now, yeah.
Hi, Tasha Kelly, General Manager with the Holiday Inn Express at 17677 Wright Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And we're applying for our retail liquor license.
Great, thank you. Just here to answer questions, right?
Yes.
Any other proponents today on number 19?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm a proponent and I want to wish the council happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved 7 to 0. Item 20, to consider a change of location application for Okra African Grill to be located at 608-610 South 72nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 are today. We also have the applicant by Zoom.
Yeah, hi, my name is Nina Sodi, um, of owner of Okra African Grill, 1303 South 72nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. I'm moving, um, Okra from this location to the new location and I'm here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today on number 20? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved 7 to 0. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
There's been a request to remove number 29 from consent agenda by Councilmember Johnson, so we'll take that separately. First, we'll take the other items in this category. So the public hearings on agenda items number 21 through 28 and 30 through 33 were held on December 14th. Roll call.
Roe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 7 to 0. Item 29 is an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 13, Article 2, Division 2, entitled Human Rights, to amend the powers and duties of the Human Rights and Relations Board.
The public hearing was held. Ms. Johnson, would you like the floor?
Um, yeah, um, the purpose of this ordinance is to examine the roles and responsibility of the Human Rights and Relations Board. And so, um, that, um, board does study information on discrimination or denials of equal protection of the law because of race, color, religion, sex, age, disability, national origin, um, and things like that. This, uh, ordinance is a concern of mine, given the climate of today, the political climate of today, when we're, uh, as a nation, we're dealing with issues regarding discrimination and, um, issues regarding race. And I just think that, um, since we're looking at the roles and responsibilities of this board, that we need to slow this down a little bit, um, so that we can get those roles and rights and, um, those roles and responsibility, get it right. So therefore I'm going to be, I'm asking that we hold this over, um, to the, I believe, January 12th meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
January 11th, I believe.
January 11th.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for the correction.
Is that your motion?
So I move that we, uh, hold this over and, uh, giving us an opportunity to look at those rights and roles because the wording, um, in this ordinance causes me some concerns. And, um, this will give us some time to, um, look at them and make sure that we get them right. Um, so yeah, I'm making a motion to hold this over to January 11th.
Second, Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Um, Dr. Thompson, would you mind? I just want to make sure that, especially if it gets laid over, I just want to make sure the record's correct as to what we're deciding and what this board does and the fact that we haven't had it, the three panel board, that it's been non-existent.
Franklin Thompson, um, Right Human Rights and Relations, 1819 Farnham. I'm here to answer any questions that board members may have.
Could you please just state exactly what this is creating?
Um, first of all, I'd like to say that there's a misnomer out there that we're going to only have one board and that one board will be three people. That is incorrect. We will have two boards. One board will handle, um, issues that, uh, Ms. Johnson is, uh, concerned about. And then the second board will handle one thing only. And that one thing being, uh, when a person, uh, makes a complaint and wins what we call a cause finding, that cause finding then has to go, if, if they don't conciliate it, then it has to go to some kind of body, whether it be court or an administrative body to decide, um, how restitution is going to be paid. So this civil rights hearing board, which has not been in operation since 1998, is, is the civil rights hearing board that's in question. And, um, there are three, two and a half ways that clients, complainants can go to. They can, uh, they can hire their own lawyer and go to court. They can use our law department and have them represent them and go to court. Or they can go before an administrative board, also known as the Civil Rights Hearing Board. More than likely, the Civil Rights Hearing Board will only be used once or twice a year. And the reason why it won't be used that much is because, uh, complainants can actually get more by going the other route. But you may say, well, why even have this, uh, civil rights hearing board? And the reason being is because all of our sister agencies throughout the United States has, has it. Now, when we, I, I urge all of you to, uh, not lay this over and to vote it up, but when all is said and done, the Omaha solution will actually be better than the solution in other places because those places will just have, uh, an administrative board only. We will continue to allow our complainants to use, uh, resources in, in law like they've been doing for 22 years. And so it's, it's more of a, kind of a housekeeping logistics issue. And what I don't want to see is, um, that process gummed up after working with HUD for a long time to get their clearance saying, okay, we're good with it. time to get their clearance saying, okay, we're good with it, but also, one of the things that people don't quite understand, I think Ms. Johnson doesn't understand, is that for her to reach her goal, and from listening to the testimony from last week, and also from having private conversations with Ms. Johnson, I see her goal as things such as a desire to have more diversity, not only on this board, but other boards, this one being a primary one because of its title, as a desire to be able to say, we're not quite in line with the administration's nominations, and we want to have more say in nominations to the boards, this board being a prime one, and also to give an existing HR board more muscle, more authority to address things, certain topics that are kind of new within our society today, topics such as perhaps police profiling, housing as it relates to redlining, so we look at individual cases, but redlining issues is a macro solution issue, not micro, or just the whole, the certain communities have a lack of faith in the city's commitment to diversity, and so those things very well might be something we need to look at in twenty twenty-two, but address those issues with the right fix, not with the wrong fix, the wrong fix is to beat up or gut the board that only hears the case that has been given a cause hearing to see, okay, now that you have your cause, what is it that you get as a result of that, that's the only thing that board has if...
And Dr. Thompson, that's because that's what our charter, so we have that, we have a charter, it's kind of like our city constitution, I mean, that's, that's, people I don't think understand that we have the Omaha City Charter.
Right.
Which describes these things, so there are a lot of things that if we want to change or change definitions of groups or departments or things like that, that can't be done by a city ordinance, it can't be done by an individual council member, and actually can't be done by the mayor either, it would have to be done in a charter convention.
Which I understand will convene in the fall.
Yes.
My suggestion is, is to, if a real fix to these problems is to, let's take, let's assess and take an assessment of what's missing, what still needs to be done, what needs to be improved, and then go about refashioning a stronger, more responsive board, but to stop the process of fixing a twenty-two-year problem, and that board only has one thing they do, and to try to give them more powers that they can't have, I don't understand that, I don't, I don't understand what you gain from that, what do you gain from voting today? The gain is that we're finally not, we're finally in compliance after twenty-two years, and I've said on record before, I'm surprised we got away with it for so long, but one of the reasons why we got away with it is because our law department, which is one of the top ones in the Midwest, I must say, they've done a good job of filling in the blanks, but still, you want, you want to be able to say that all the HRR agencies, which I call, they're called FAPs, are sister agencies, that we're all on the same plane doing the same thing, so, kudos to Ms. Johnson for wanting to take this subject matter, a difficult subject matter, look into it more and do more to it, but choose the right fix, the holding this up is not the right fix, the correct fix is to say, are the boards in general, do they need more power, you know, do we need to take a look at who does nominating, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, now, the board, the other board that I have is the Human Rights and Relations Board, and that board is a board that perhaps the charter convention should be looking at, that's the one that maybe or may not need some strengthening or some, some changing or whatever, but this one that we're voting on today, they only have one charge, and that one charge is just to hear what the complainant wants, and in most cases, I would say ninety percent of the times in the cases, complainants won't even choose this administrative board, so it's kind of an oxymoron that we're spending a lot of time on something that's going to be not used well. One last thing before I stop, there's also a, kind of a structural design problem, and so this is, this is me, Franklin Thompson, advising you, if you have a board of eleven people, and they only meet once or twice a year, you're going to have a, a public relations nightmare, because they're going to say, this crazy council and this unresponsive administration put us together and we don't do anything, so allowing, allowing this three-board alternative, which HUD has agreed to, who will meet far more often every month, and won't get burnt out, and will do the job, the reason why HUD agreed with it is because they saw the wisdom in doing it that way, so my, my request is not only do you vote on it today, but to see this for what it really is, I don't, I didn't get any of this kind of feeling from Ms. Johnson, but I did feel that from the audience, there was sort of a little side, little hint there that somehow my office is pulling the okie-doke over somebody's eyes, and if anything, we're solving a problem that we were lucky that we didn't get called on a little bit more, so, no, we're not doing any sleight of hand, Ms. Melton, if you were to look at the, the part that's struck in, stricken. You will see that, yes, Ms., Ms., Weston was right in that five took away something, but go down to number eight and you see it added it back.
Right.
Okay, same thing with eight, it took it back, it took it away, but it added it back, and you might say, well, why even do that, and that's because eight had to be polished just a little bit, because it had the board and my office colliding with one another, and it, it was worded wrong in the beginning several years ago, so we had to make sure that what my office does, that they're not stepping on that, so we just had to make sure that we had clear lines of communications, but the board still does do investigations, they just do investigations that we don't do, and so again, it seems like a lot of, a little bit of a fear tactic when there's not even a problem, a problem is created when there is no problem, so.
Right, so you're just asking us not to hold this, the civil rights hostage, this, the civil rights panel of three hostage while we're trying to figure out a whole bunch of other issues, problems, solutions for things that have nothing to do with this board?
Exactly, and then if, I would be more than willing to be a part of any, having to grow the area of human rights and relations, civil rights, that's what I do, I've been doing that for forty-four years, it's what I do, and I'm not going to all of a sudden empty my brains on the ground and not do it now, but I want to make sure that we're taking the right vehicles to do the right job. I, I really love those people who are passionate about this topic, but you have to be careful because everybody thinks they're Martin Luther King or Malcolm X or H.R. Brown, and they're not, and then everybody thinks that they can just roll in with emotions and then get things done, and if you study each one of those individuals that I mentioned, they were strategic, you, you just can't talk, and then the talk and guilt makes everybody have to change, it doesn't work that way, so what we have to do is to make sure that we go after these problems, but do it strategically and the right way. This, going after this three-board member that only has one charge is not the right way.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, I don't have any further questions, have you added everything you wanted to add today?
Unless, do you have any other questions?
I don't, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roe, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I serve on the HR and R Committee with two of my colleagues, and I just wanted to thank you for the work that you and your team have done to get this accomplished with HUD and make sure that we are in compliance and that going forward we have a board that will function and will function properly, so I just wanted to say thank you for, for your efforts on, on that regard.
Thank you.
Okay, no further lights, there's a motion in a second to layover until January eleventh? Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to three.
I'll note for the next portion of our agenda that number seventy has been removed, so we'll take that separately, first we'll address the other items on the agenda, public hearings on agenda items number thirty-four through sixty-nine and seventy-one are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Hello, today, how y'all doing, Sherman Wells, forty-seven eighteen Kansas Avenue, the agenda item that I'm addressing is item number fifty-five, the nomination of Lillian Clemmons Street to be named in place, uh, in place of Caldwell Street, it's not really like I expect any opponents, but I did just want to let you know that I'm, first of all, I'm here with her son, and Lillian Clemmons was a Army veteran who passed away, is this thing on, or?
Yeah, make sure that arm's all the way up.
All the way up?
Yeah. Okay, should come on in here in a second.
Okay.
Got it.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let y'all know that she is a Army native who passed away in the Iraq War, and we want to make sure that Omaha remembers her for her sacrifice for serving her country, she was a Central High graduate, born and raised in Omaha, and Caldwell Street is actually the street that she grew up on, and so that's why we're here today, just to make sure that y'all know this is not just something we doing just on a humbug, this was actually a hero of, of the country, and she is from Omaha, Nebraska, and so you guys are all welcome to come to the unveiling of the sign, anybody else here, and this is also a relative of hers right here, and so we just wanted to make sure y'all knew why we were presenting the case to have the street named after Lillian Clemmons, that's her again right here, this is all on Caldwell Street, just so you know, and so we just want to make sure that when we drive past Caldwell Street, we see her name on that sign, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me say thanks for sharing that story, too, we appreciate that.
Yeah, of course.
I look forward to attending this ceremony when you have a date.
Oh, y'all all more than welcome.
And as a, as a fellow Central High School graduate, it makes me really proud, and we want to thank you for your family service and your mom's service to our country.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and then we'd like to say it's really sad that so-called leaders this year don't even know who she is, but they claim to be leaders, I mean, it's really funny to me, people be talking in riddles and rhymes, you know, about H.R. Brown and all, and people are dead, it's just crazy.
Please, sir.
Yeah. Sir, is it possible, your name and address for the record there, just to, speaking of your comments into the record there?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm Soon Diadamentali, I am the executive director down at Bryan Center, which is back alive, which, which is, excuse me.
Yeah, come on down to the microphone if you don't mind, that's okay.
My name is Soon Diadamentali, I'm at twenty-two twenty-three Dodge Street, here in Omaha, Nebraska, but what I was saying, it's funny that a lot of people are talking in riddles and rhymes, but they really don't even know what's going on in North Omaha, a lot of people, you, if you can get, this is what I would like to do, get about ten of the last, five of the last leaders in this room, and see how many followers they have, I bet you you couldn't get ten people in there.
Thank you. And go ahead if you'd like to add something.
We really appreciate that you're doing, you're voting on this. She's my mother, and like you said, she was a soldier. Uh, I joined the Marine Corps.
Your name and address?
Name and address?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, I gotta know that, yeah, okay, my name is Ayinde Williams, it's spelled A-Y-I-N-D-E, an accent over the E, last name Williams, I currently live at three three, A four, three three eight four, South Eighty-first Avenue, thank you for your time.
You bet, yeah, thank you. Any other speakers on these items?
Hello, my name's Sarah Johnson, two three one six, North Fifty-second Street, I tried, I'm speaking on number sixty-eight, the appointment to the library board, I tried to get in time, but it didn't come back in time, the open records request to see who all applied for the library board position, but I just think there's a lot of conversation, and rightly so, around the libraries and library board specifically these days, and I do appreciate Counselor Harding for responding to my email and Roe as well, thank you, my point is Cameron Gales has already worked directly for Mayor Stothard, and so a lot of times when there's some skepticism and some pushback on some of these appointments, it's just being like, yes, men for the mayor, this would just seem like another one, and I know there were actually because I've asked around and I was able to find out on my own who all applied, there were some other pretty great applicants, and I just think that it would be a trust-building step to just appoint someone who has not directly already worked for the mayor, I'm sure it'll go through without much discussion, but I just wanted to put on the record, if you want to build trust with the community, start appointing people, and I know it's up to the mayor, and Brinker Harding's response was probably, yes, she'll have some sort of relationship because she's appointing them, and I get that totally, but it would just be a good idea for her if she wants the community to trust her, to just not always appoint someone who's worked directly for her, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on these items? Seeing none, Councilmember Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, I just would like to recognize the Clemmons family and thank them for their time and effort in putting this all together regarding street naming, I also want to say that, um, street naming is just one of the many ways that we can recognize historic significance or importance in the area, and this is just awesome, and I just wanted to pay homage to your, your family legacy, and, and thank you for putting this forth to this body, thank you.
That sounds like a motion for items number thirty-four through sixty-nine and seventy-one, is that right?
That is, thank you.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seventy, a resolution to approve the appointment of Charlene Rogers to the Omaha Municipal Land Bank Board of Directors from December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one to December twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Public hearing on number seventy is today, proponents please.
Shannon Snow, one one four one, North Eleventh Street, I'm the executive director of the Omaha Municipal Land Bank, here to answer questions.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the city council, Thomas Warren, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham. As you know, the city of Omaha has over 60 boards and commissions. The mayor, by statute and by code, has the authority to nominate candidates for these appointments pending city council approval. We receive candidates that apply. Sometimes they're recommended, sometimes they're referred, other times it's as a result of a relationship. But we are submitting Ms. Charlon Rogers' nomination, her candidacy for the appointment to the land bank board. She meets all of the requirements. When we have candidates, we do vet them to make sure that they meet the requirements, namely residency in this instance. We did have some candidates that didn't, quite frankly, reside in District Two, so they didn't meet the residency requirements. But Ms. Rogers has participated with the land bank, the community advisory board. She has a distinguished professional record, an executive master's in business administration from the University of Nebraska at Omaha. We feel that she brings assets to the land bank that she will contribute, as well as a longtime resident of North Omaha and engaged in the North Omaha community. So we would certainly appreciate your consideration and approval of her candidacy. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents here today.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and all of the council members. My name is Charlon, S-H-A-R-L-O-N, Rogers, 2616 North 32nd Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none. Any opponents?
Sometimes these masks get in the way, but I'm gonna wear my mask. Sorry about that.
You're right.
Thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak to you, the board today, or the board, I got it on my mind, the city council today. I just put it up there, but I think I did send each one of you this letter. And I'll read it just briefly. Nepotism works overtime at the Omaha Municipal Land Bank. North Omaha District Two just can't seem to get a break. If they speak up, they're told to be quiet. If they stand up for what is believed to be the right thing to do, they are told to sit down. Why? Why is it that every time a recommendation for a board commission and so forth for North Omaha, only the chosen from the inner city of the black and brown are selected? Only those that are connected to such favorite organizations, businesses, or agencies, the empowerment network, only those that are connected to the right nonprofits in North Omaha are consistently chosen. North Omaha has a young, bright, educated individuals, as well as seasoned, experienced individuals that are hardly, highly capable and qualified to field board positions. Why not give them an opportunity? After the infamous video YouTube where Mayor Gene Stothard was asked about the seat, voting representation for District Two on Omaha Land Bank being vacant for over five months, her reply was, "The board has been able to function properly without a voting member for over five months." The board has been able to operate functionally. Hmm, functionally. What does that say about the importance of District Two having any voter representation? As long as the board is functionally properly, then I guess it's the hell with District Two having representation. Back in July of 2021, when Ben Gray's nomination was foiled by the community and city council's inability to obtain five votes for a supermajority, the community made it, community made it very clear, they wanted no more of the Gray error and his associates. What do they, the people, get put before them on December 21st, 2021? It slid through on a consent agenda. And if people weren't watching the city council agendas each week, it would have passed. No opposition. The mayor comes right back with another pick from the in-crowd. Charlon Rogers, Douglas County Commissioner, Chris Rogers' wife, part of the chosen group, the Ben Gray in-crow, the empowerment, empowerment group, those that have empowered themselves while keeping the North Omaha community in its economic poverty and inadequate, substandard, and unaffordable housing position. Just one of those items that you passed on the agenda was $500,000 to them for the Step Up program. It is always those that are the loyalists to Mayor Gene Stothard, or perhaps we should say Mayor Stothard is loyal to them. It's always the same in-crowd, which is dedicated, it appears, to keep North Omaha in check, in her place, while they gain favors, political clout, and self-financial enrichment. It was said that just a few moments ago, candidates are vetted. What candidates were vetted for this position? The Teba Brown, who applied on September 9th, 2021 for the voting position on the Omaha Land Bank, is a young lady who did all the things right. Was she the one that was out of the district? She graduated from Randall School of Real Estate. Ms. Rogers has no real estate license. Ms. Rogers started real estate school, but never finished. Ms. Brown completed the developers academy. She's a member of the Young Professional Chamber of Commerce, member of the Commercial Real Estate of Women in Omaha, and a member of the Omaha Land Bank Ambassador, which she has committed to attending regular meetings. Ms. Rogers was appointed to the Omaha Land Bank Advisory Committee, but has failed to attend the land bank meetings regularly. So if you can't commit to being in attendance for board meetings as an advisor, how will she serve in a very important role, a voting member for District Two? Recently, last week, the Omaha City Council had several items come before them with the lack of participation from the recommended appointed confirmed board members to city government boards. Dr. Franklin Thompson was one of those. And we just heard how they've had this problem with board members and they weren't able to find ones who would, who would meet on a regular basis twice a year. So perhaps is the mayor looking in the wrong places? Looking at the wrong pool of individuals? Why not widen the horizon and look beyond the inner circle? At the same county, city council meeting, City Council Vinnie Palermo, sorry about that, we are serving notice, he said, "You sign up for these boards and we're going to hold you accountable." As an elected official, Omaha City County member, you have an option to vote no to Mayor Stothard's recommendation of Charlotte Rogers to the Omaha Municipal Land Bank. We understand, just because the city operates under Mayor-City Council Charter, does not mean that you have to rubber stamp every recommendation every time. Although you may have been elected from a specific district, you have an obligation. You took an oath to represent all the citizens of Omaha. We ask, "Stand for the citizens. Stand for the citizens of North Omaha." The district has said no, no, to any more District Two leadership roles for the in-crowd members, not once, but twice. How many times do we have to say no, no, no more? What do we want? First, we're asking you to look into your moral compass, your values, your judgment of what is right and wrong, and make a decision based upon those values and not a political party or an allegiance to one person. Second, we would ask that you support your colleague, Councilwoman Juanita Johnson. Third, do the right thing. Support District Two and vote no today to the appointment of Charlon Rogers. Fourth, we asked that you broker a meeting with the mayor and Councilwoman Johnson to review the other applicants for the District Two voting position on the Omaha Land Bank. And fifth, support the applicant of Councilwoman Johnson's recommendation. Lastly, we ask that you vote in new leadership. I know it's been said, it's been hinted at, that this is a personal thing. It is not a personal thing against the individuals, it's a personal thing when you look at what it is in the community about voting and standing up and asking for your support. That's personal, yes. It's personal to us to ask and say, can't we have more representation, different representation? That's personal. But it's never been about personal. I know Ms. Rogers, we attend the same church when we had church before COVID. I know her husband. It's not personal against them as a personal thing like that. I had a meeting with the mayor, October 22nd, 2021, her and her chief of staff. And I tried to explain to the mayor then, it's not personal in that mode. And she told me, well, it was personal to her and she felt that it was personal. How many times can you say something? So if a person does not want to accept that, there's nothing you can say or do. But we can ask you to stand for us. I don't know all the applications that were submitted. According to the information that I received through public record, there were four applications. Charlon Rogers. And I wanted to note, when was this done? April 20th, 2021. We're talking about December 21, 2021. Teba Brown put in her, her resume and application September 9th, 2021. After meeting with the mayor, and she said that, you know, there hadn't been any, any applications, she just received one name through an email from Councilwoman Johnson. And I watched that video, and I watched that video over and over and over. And you want to know what was personal? It was personal how it hurt to hear her say, "Well, it functions properly." She didn't need District Two because it functioned properly. I then submitted my own application when I knew there was no way on this side of heaven, thank God I'm on this side, of heaven, is that I submitted mine on December 11th, 2021. I never received a vetted, I never received a call, I never received anything, response, except for a little green card that was signed that said they received it. Ms. Brown, I talked to her and she said that she had not received, and she tried twice, calling to see what was going on, where she stood at. So it's awful. I'm not saying the word funny to mean funny that you laugh at, but it seems like soon as I put my application in, several days later, we now come up with the application that Ms. Rogers put in on April 20th, but on the video, she hadn't received any. So it makes it again, that's why the community has that suspect. Another thing, I'm, all of you are, or I'd say all of you have been in business, you're professionals. And why is it when anything is going to be in District Two, the paperwork's shoddy, the timing's shoddy, everything is so shoddy when it comes to District Two? And what I have given you was, there we go. All of you have been in business. This is a small, but I believe you all received in a packet, attached to your city council package, the application, the resume for Ms. Brown and for Ms. Rogers. When you look at those applications or resumes, being in business, would any of you have looked at Ms. Rogers, you would have been saying, "Is that an example of that individual?" Probably most of you wouldn't even continue to read it because it was so haphazardly put together.
Cheryl, just one second, please. I'm gonna ask, if you can't get your phone to be silenced, then I'm gonna ask you to step out with it, okay? All right. And Cheryl, let's have you wrap up. I think we have some more speakers too.
Yes. Here is Ms. Brown's resume. Well done, put together. Nope, well, it's not really gonna show all of it, but very well put together. Here's my resume. Of course it's put together well. Little bias.
Do you want to focus it on top there? Yeah.
Up here?
There it goes.
There it goes, okay. I've given you a copy so you could see the full one. And my thinking is, everything that comes to District Two, it's never really done in a professional-like manner, because you just push it through and you're gonna vote for it. I will end, this was sent to me, and I did attach a copy. It says, "Without a non-bias watchdog for District Two at the Omaha Municipal Land Bank, it's like playing the game of Monopoly. You're playing Monopoly. One player is given all the property except for Baltic Avenue. They're also given 95% of the bank. You're expected to succeed with what's left. Of course, you lose immediately. Why? Because you have no control, no influence, no decision-making power, no vote, no representation, and no get out of jail card. You are left with forced displacement and negative impact of gentrification and only $10 for passing go. The reason you only get $10, if you remember, the bank had taken 95% of your $200. I thank you for your time and I hope this time you will use and think of your moral compass on deciding how to vote. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Sorry. Getting over something. It's not COVID. I've been chested. Everybody was like, huh. So, Chiquela Yar... So, Chiquila Yarborough, 2216 Military Avenue. Thank you guys, first of all, for showing up today. Pandemic's been driving us crazy. If you have three kids at home, it's probably driving you a little crazy, too. Thank you, community, for showing up because these things, these processes exist for a reason. I am the founder and acting chief executive officer, unless I get voted off my own company, of the Compete Institute of Socioeconomic Policy and Education. And we were founded in 2018 for instances such as this. We saw that there was a rift in the African-American community, primarily District 2, so much so that we felt the need to build businesses, provide some infrastructure, really bridge the gap between, I'm 34, I'm not calling anybody old, I'm going to say, the previous generation and ourselves. And we just couldn't seem to, as a generation, we really were looking for answers and solutions to a lot of the issues in our district and we could not figure out the source of contention. And so we began to survey the community and survey all the processes, primarily in child welfare and socio-economic endeavors. We then got to look at the stratifications between state government, city government, and the county. And there lies a lot of the issues. I am here today to appeal on behalf of the citizens of District 2 because we are the children of District 2. I like to think I'm still a child at 34. Please don't kill my vibe. But I have three little girls and I don't want them to inherit the District 2 that we currently have. A lot of the disarray in District 2 is largely due to political posturing, such as what's going on today. I don't have any personal stake in the game. I'm not particularly running for the land bank position. However, I am in strong opposition of anything that the community is taking a hard stance against. And because what we specifically do as an organization is survey the community, I can say wholeheartedly that about 82% of District 2 is in disagreement with this decision, with the mayor's recommendation of Mrs. Rogers. Ms. Rogers, I like your hair. Hi, Chief. Particularly, and from listening to the community and surveying the community, hosting those town halls, visiting homes, door knocking, old-school canvassing, not just on this issue, but this issue, but many others, what the community is particularly stating is that with that old political machine that Sister Cheryl is talking about, the Black community has suffered and we have gotten a lot of issues of disproportionality or that resulted in disproportionality of representation in the system of Black people who are primarily residing in District 2. Case in point, the building of a new jail, I call it a baby jail, but the Juvenile Justice Center, which was highly opposed by the citizens in District 2, but you wouldn't know that because our city-county vote and our Douglas County Commission vote did not reflect that. So I am pro and I have nothing personal against these individuals. However, we have to give the people a voice. And when we elect these officials, we are trusting that these people are carrying out the wishes of the district and the individuals that make up that district, especially if it's going to result in some type of disparity. We are in a community right now that is rife with disparate conditions. You name it, and the Black community is at the top of the list in disparities, at least in our more urban populations. It's different in the Panhandle. But I say that to say that the community has spoken about who they would like to see. I think Teba Brown has more visibility. She not only is able to function at an administrative level, the level to which this position would require, but she also has strong political ties. I'm sorry, strong community ties. She's a real person. We can touch Teba. I can go to Walmart and see her. I can go to church and I can see her. She's on Facebook. She takes initiatives in the community to teach the average person how to advocate for themselves, whether it's in finance or it's in real estate. And so that is why the community has specifically leaned towards that particular representative, if that could be our choice. And so, again, the political posturing of this city, which has been going on longer than I've been alive, I'm sure, is something that is perpetuating the disconnect in District 2 and directly resulting in disparate conditions for Black people. That is my concern. I don't really care who holds a spot. I'm tired of hungry, homeless, Black children. I'm tired of crime being out of control and it's definitely preventable. So as a Black community, we need to all get on the same page. We all need to be together. I don't care who it is. As a Black community, if you are in District 2, we cannot be divided by political powers. So what I am looking for in my community is perhaps a town hall where all of these individuals, all the candidates can have a sit-down with their community and discuss this. But I'm asking today that we honor the request of the community not to make this appointment today, not to vote yes. Thank you.
Any other opponents today?
How y'all doing? Sherman Wells, 4718 Kansas Avenue. So I'm coming down here, really not as an opponent to Ms. Rogers because I don't know her. So I personally don't know her, so it's not really about her. This is about the council. So the last time we was discussing this same position, some of y'all took a stance that it's the mayor's prerogative to appoint people and to do what she wants to do. However, I just want to let this council know that the time for doing what you want to do in District 2, that part is over. And you're not here to support the mayor. You're here to support the people who voted for you. And what we heard today from Brother Franklin is, whenever you have people asking questions or speaking on the leadership of District 2, now we trying to be Malcolm X or Martin Luther King. Those are some big shoes to fill. And we don't have to be one of those gray men to speak on things or have questions about things. It's just, since we had 12 years of the old leadership, we didn't have the opportunity that we have now in Ms. Johnson to have somebody that actually comes when we ask them to or shows up to meetings and things where we can all talk and be in the loop of what's going on. And so I just want to remind this council that there's problems in District 2 that y'all have no idea about. And if we are saying it's an issue, your job is not to just side with the mayor because she's the mayor and y'all have "I support the mayor" on your Facebook pictures. Your job is to go with what the district is asking. And so, like Ms. Yarborough said, I really don't care who's in the position, but if my community has an issue with it or if we want a voice of opinion or even just ask questions, that don't mean we're trying to start some revolution. But the days of you doing what you want to do and it's the mayor's prerogative in District 2 is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents today?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Just so happens, I did send you an email about the same type of topic going back to last week when my name was mentioned by Mr. Thompson. But I also am against the Omaha Land Bank. I don't think we know enough or understand enough about the Omaha Land Bank. And because we don't, I perceive that there's probably some dirty politics in it. But I also was against Ben Gray's appointment because I've been up at this council podium many times when he kept saying, "We're going to have that discussion. Omaha is systemic racist yet, and we will have that discussion." And he will go down to the state legislature and bring back equal opportunity and all that that goes back to the '70s. Always the threat of a discussion, but never a two-way. Today, you're getting a two-way discussion. Now unfortunately, it is personal. And I'm trying not to be racist. But it seemed very funny last week that because I brought up CRT and something racial in the morning, a lot of people came out of the woodwork for the afternoon council meeting, including the big guns. And one of the big guns, Mr. Ernie Chambers, threatened to sue you guys. He knows all the big hefty important lawyers and he can do that. And then all of a sudden, you change your mind about the redistricting thing. The discussion should have been held with these people before the redistricting was done. And I do agree with him. And I applaud that young lady back there with the curly hair for what she said last week and this week. But I abhor you people for not standing up and treating her as equal as you treat me. I have been walked out of this place many times for being slightly off the topic or being over five minutes. And I'm sick and tired of that. I don't want to say that that was racial and I don't want to say it's just you people because the previous president of this council was a lot worse. I have experienced quite a few of those things, which technically are unreasonable rules and technically would be a violation of a citizen's rights, just like these people think their rights are violated. But I also want to mention that not too long ago, Black Lives Members people were in here with their shirts, all over their shirts. And we had people that profess to be the Revolutionary Action Party. They even talk about reparations on their website. So what I am suggesting is, like this lady here's a town hall, but something better than a town hall. A full, open, two-way debate with the Attorney General and the Nebraska Omaha Public County Attorney to set the stage for what is an open meetings and reasonable rules because they're not being reasonable all across the spectrum as the Act calls for, everybody. But somebody has to set what is reasonable and what isn't reasonable. And for you to sit there and you guys to sit there and not get up and say, "Excuse me, but your language is maybe slightly out of order. Your tone is slightly out of order. You're out of time." See, this body, he can let anybody speak as long as he wants. The other bodies across Nebraska want to limit you to five minutes or less and maybe one total hour for this whole meeting. That's the OPS School Board.
So Larry, we are interested in hearing testimony on this item and that's why we're letting people speak.
Okay.
For a certain amount of time.
I'm done. Thank you for not cutting me off earlier.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you. Other opponents today on number 70?
Hello, Scott Blake, 2316 North 52nd Street. Several people left. And I think it's important to note that I know they wanted to speak. They just had to be somewhere. And I didn't really prepare much, but I attended two online meetings specifically on this agenda item, read two news articles on the Nebraska News Channel, I believe by Joe Jordan, and watched a podcast last night on Black Men United. On this, just on this issue alone, there are a lot of eyes. I think, again, a lot of people that wanted to be here that couldn't. Some of the things that were said, I'm just kind of going off of what I heard the last couple of days, was Sharlon's lack of real estate background qualifications. She's already serving on the land bank but does not attend the meetings. So why are we going to add to what she can't already handle? And then a lot of people were reminded of when we were here, I think in July, when Ben Gray... And that brings me to my last point. Sorry, I went kind of all over the place. Was the two-thirds vote. Section 2-238 says seven voting members appointed by the mayor requires a two-thirds vote. So hopefully, we won't get in that position last time and we won't be here until 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents on number 70? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. I would like to ask some questions of Chief Warren, please. And I like these questions entered on the record for purposes of people on Zoom as well as people that are at home, unable to attend the city council meetings due to the timing and just so that District 2 is informed and educated about how things work. So I do have a list of questions that I'd like to ask and I would ask that you be patient and respond to those questions and know that this is not a personal attack. It's just point of clarification, point of information, again, for District 2 representatives. Thank you. You're my eyes and ears. Walk me through the process used to determine this nomination to the land bank board.
Thomas Warren, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham. Again, we receive applications. Sometimes individuals are recommended. Sometimes they're referred. Sometimes they are recruited. In this instance, as a result of the previous attempt to appoint to the land bank, that nomination failed. As a result, we waited, delayed somewhat, until things kind of cooled off with regards to the last effort to appoint a member from District 2, a representative from District 2 to the land bank. We had received applications. We received Ms. Rogers' application back in April. We did receive subsequent applications, a couple which did not meet the residency requirement. We identified Ms. Rogers as the preferred candidate. And as I stated previously, it is the mayor's responsibility. It's within her authority statutorily. It is her prerogative to make a recommendation of the candidates for boards and commissions by code here in the city of Omaha. And so we adhere to that process by submitting Ms. Rogers' candidacy as a nomination for this appointment.
Thank you. When did you first learn about this appointment to the land bank board?
This particular appointment?
Yes, sir.
Well, as a result of, you know, our effort to appoint Mr. Ben Gray, obviously that failed. Ms. Tiffany Hunter had served as the representative from District 2, but when she changed her residency, she became an at-large member. That's when the vacancy was created.
More to the point, when did you first learn about Ms. Rogers being the appointment to the land bank board?
We submitted Ms. Rogers formally. It would have been a week ago Thursday when we submitted the application to be placed on the city council agenda.
And so, again, as you mentioned, the mayor has the right to appoint. So I'm asking, when did you learn that the mayor has specifically appointed Ms. Rogers to the board for the land bank board that we're talking about today?
I just stated, you know, we've had formal conversations within the office and then ultimately, the decision was made to submit her candidacy when we presented the application, the nomination form, to be placed on the city council's agenda.
Okay, so we know that on Thursday, the city council agenda was, this was placed on the agenda. So I guess I'm asking, prior to that being placed on the agenda, when did you know about the mayor's decision for this to be placed on the agenda? the mayor's decision for this to be placed on the agenda and more importantly, that Ms. Rogers was the, was selected as the, for the appointment?
Okay, I can't give you a specific date. I can tell you that we've had discussions and when it was decided that we would submit the nomination, it was formally presented to the city council last Thursday to be placed on the agenda. I mean, it's no conspiracy or secret here. It, I mean, that's just the process.
Again, I'm not implying that there is. I do know that on Thursday, it was put on the agenda. So are you saying that Thursday, the mayor, this past Thursday, the mayor decided that she would appoint Ms. Rogers to the board?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we've had.
Because that's what I'm asking is when that happened.
I said, I can't give you a specific date.
Okay.
Okay. We've had discussions. And then it was decided that we would submit her nomination formally when we presented it to the city council to be placed on the agenda as a nomination subject to city council approval.
Okay, who was at the table when all the applications were considered for this board appointment?
Well, typically, it's a conversation that will be held with Ms. Carrie Murphy, the deputy chief of communications, myself and Mayor Stotter. But ultimately, it's Mayor Stotter's decision to identify whom she would want to nominate as the candidate.
Thank you. Was there any council member notified of this appointment prior to the item being placed on the agenda on 12/16?
No, and I would tell you that the mayor has not made a practice of presenting candidates for appointments to boards or commissions. As I mentioned, it is her prerogative, it's her statutory authority. Now, there may be occasions when a council member may have questions once they see the nomination on the agenda or concerns or, for that matter, would have made a recommendation. But I will tell you that the mayor does not make it a practice of vetting candidates prior to submitting them for their, their nomination to be placed on the council agenda.
Okay, and again, these questions are being asked for educational purposes, informational, no attack, just for constituents in District 2 to understand the process. I will go ahead and continue. The largest amount of the land bank pool is located in District 2. What is the rationale for not having a discussion with the city council member of District 2, both during the vetting process and prior to placement of the appointment on the council agenda?
As I mentioned, the mayor does not make it a standard practice of having these discussions on candidates for appointment to boards and commissions prior to them being submitted to the council and being placed on the council agenda.
Thank you. Are you surprised about the comments made today by the community?
No, not at all. And I would tell you that you have voices within the community, North Omaha's community or the African-American community is not monolithic. There are a number of points of view and people can respectfully agree to disagree for that matter. But no, I'm not surprised from those who spoke here today.
Okay. After hearing these comments, are you concerned about public opinions and the overall impact placed on a community when perception becomes that their voices are not valued?
Well, I can tell you that we listen. We may disagree with certain assertions as well as, I don't feel that, well, I'll say on behalf of the mayor, her post city government isn't as parochial as may have been presented. She was elected to represent the entire city of Omaha, including North Omaha, and we feel that she does provide proper representation to the constituents of District 2.
Okay, thank you. And how can we do a better job on how we communicate to the public about committee appointments and how the selection process is made?
You know, all of this information is available. It's available via the website for anyone who wants to know about our boards and commissions, what the requirements are, what the qualifications are, the purpose of those respective boards and commissions. And of course, they can contact the mayor's office if they've expressed interest in a board appointment.
Okay. Thank you for taking the time to answer those questions and again, providing District 2 with the information that is so much valuable as we continue to grow and develop in the political space in our community. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
At this time, I move to deny the appointment because a five-day notice of a committee appointment simply does not allow time to advocate fully to a community by its city council members. I recommend that we take a look at this process whereby everyone wins. Again, I move that we deny this appointment because a five-day notice of a committee appointment simply does not allow time to advocate fully to a community by its city council members. I recommend that we take a look at this process whereby everyone wins. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I think where I was going to start, I'm going to start in a different space. But first, I'll ask Mr. Koozie, if you would, just give us the 101 on boards, the process for appointments, along those lines, if you will.
Matt Koozie, City Attorney. The charter for the city of Omaha, as well as a number of state statutes and a number of ordinances, creates a number of boards and commissions throughout the city such as the planning board, personnel board, library board, land bank. All are created by different animals, whether it's by statute or by ordinance. Section 3.04 of the charter, which is the equivalent of our constitution for the city of Omaha, grants the sole authority to the chief executive of the city, which is the mayor, to name people to boards and commissions and administrative departments such as me and the fellow directors sitting up here. So that authority lies solely on the mayor. People can make suggestions to the mayor, people can apply through the mayor's website or whatever mechanism that there is to be a member of this commission, that commission, bearing in mind a number of commissions and boards, including the land bank, have a number of requirements for its membership. There has to be particularized employment and experience and there also, with regards to the land bank, has to be a requirement about district representation as well. I will say as an aside that currently, all of the statutorily required experience levels for the land bank have been met by current members of the land bank. The mayor is the one who submits it to the council. There is nothing in the charter, there is nothing in code, there is nothing in statute that requires the mayor to advise any council member, whether it's in their district or not in their district, of an appointment. So that authority lies solely with the mayor and then the authority to confirm or not confirm that appointment is left up to the city council, similar to how our United States Senate works in confirming Supreme Court appointments nominated by the president. But the nomination process and the selection process lies 100% solely within the discretion of the chief executive officer for the city.
Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Fesserson had to step out of the room for a minute, but I was going to, I'm sure he can relate, having worked for a previous mayor. And when I worked for a previous mayor, I mean, the, the appointment process was the same back then as it is today. And we would take applications from people who had an interest in doing public service, who wanted to, to do something for our community. And, you know, a lot of times, those, those applications came in with, I'm interested in doing something, here's my resume, if, if you find a match for me, if there's a board or commission that I might not know about and there's an opening, put my name on that list. I would love to be considered. And we would do that. And quite frankly, with, with the, the number of boards and commissions, sometimes, at least back then, I don't know if Carrie Murphy and maybe Mr. Warren could address how it is today, but back then, sometimes it was hard to find a number of applicants to, to be, to nominate for certain positions and we would actively have to go out and recruit. So I assume that the, the process is probably fairly similar today. And sometimes, now I'll make it a little personal. I, I'm in the commercial real estate business. When I left working for the city and went into that, in that profession, one of the boards and commissions that I had an interest in, because I wanted to continue a level of public service, was the planning board. But guess what? The, the person who had that authority, the mayor, at that time, was not going to nominate me for that position. I understood that. That's, that's how it, that's how it is. And I waited until there was an opportunity for, for someone that I could make a nomination or I could make a request to that would maybe look at my credentials or, or my request favorably. And I guess, you know, that's what happened. So I just wanted to talk about the process a little bit. And now comes the real hard part and I, I hope I can get through this because I think it's going to be tough. I want to read into the record an editorial that was delivered to all of us on the council and to the city clerk. As such, that document is already part of the public record in Word, but I think, I think it's important to hear, hear the words. They're impactful and not in a positive way. And I heard some of these comments from one of the testifiers earlier, very similar comments. The editorial is titled "Stotter's in Bed With Nepotism and Crony Capitalism. Omaha's Municipal Land Bank Is The Latest Victim." "Those Negroes Are At It Again." "What Negroes, you ask?" "It's those Uncle Toms that continue to win political favor with Mayor Stotter. Despite the fact that hundreds, thousands of well-educated and professional black men and women residing in North Omaha's District 2, nevertheless, every time, again, every time the city of Omaha needs a Negro to represent North Omaha's District 2, rest assured the pickings are limited to card-carrying members of the empowerment network. The key players of the empowerment network are black men pictured below, and for whatever reason, they are not available. Their wives are replacement stooges." The pictures that were included on this editorial are Willie Barney, Ben Gray, Chris Rogers, Tom Warren, and John Ewing. First of all, I'd like to state that I would doubt many people in this room would ever think that of those that I just named off on here were necessarily political allies of Mayor Stotter. With the exception, now, obviously, Mr. Warren works for, for the mayor, so maybe I'll grant that one. And then we talk about elections. Chris Rogers won his last election by eighty, with 86% approval, 86.7%. John Ewing, 97.2%. Mayor Stotter, almost 65%. The rest of this missive then attacks each one of these people and, and their wives. I won't read the rest of that part, but I'll, I will read the conclusion of it. "The perpetual nepotism and incestuous relationships of the empowerment network blends ever so nicely with Stotter's insidious allegiance to crony capitalism that has forever ruled both politics and business in Omaha. Yeah, those Negroes are at it again, keeping white folks happy. Bless them, enough said." You may have formed a vision in your, in your mind who might have penned those, this despicable tirade, this hateful attack. You know, maybe you would be surprised, maybe you wouldn't. That was written by a black man. And I'm going to, I'm going to say who it is because it is in the political record or it is in the, the records. It was written by a gentleman by the name of Trip Reynolds. "The mayor in this administration takes seriously the appointments of the city's boards and commissions. She also takes seriously the issue of the diverse makeup of those bodies. For example, earlier today, on the consent agenda, which also gives an opportunity for public input, we approved Carmen Gales to the, the library board. And now that board is made up of an equal number of males and females and is represented by ethnic diversity as well. Public service is a noble cause and when we have good people wanting to give their time, like Sharlin, and their talents to improve our city, to serve on the land bank board, in this case, we should applaud them and encourage them, not tear them down. I don't care who you are, that's unacceptable. Just because you or your friend is not nominated for a particular board or commission doesn't give you the right to demean those that do. Quite frankly, I'd rather have not, I'd rather not have that kind of representation on any city board or commission regardless of their gender, race, or ethnicity. It's okay to scrutinize these opponents. I'm not suggesting that we rubber stamp every agenda item that comes before us, but please do so with dignity and decorum, not this hateful, uneducated, biased dribble."
Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Well, I, actually, I just wanted to, to let Ms. Johnson know because you were asking about how people get appointed. I wanted to let everybody know how I decide. If Ms. Brown or Ms. Weston was the one being recommended, I, I've looked at their resumes and they, both of them seem qualified. So I, if their name was the one being nominated, I would vote for Ms. Brown or Ms. Weston. And I know I've had a lot of questions for Ms. Weston, but that's what I do. I, I look at when the mayor sends down an appointment, I look, I read their, their resume and I just kind of do a double check, are they, you know, are they qualified to do the job? I'm not going to vote against somebody because I might personally know them and maybe I personally don't like them. Or maybe somebody that I know doesn't like the person. I'm, I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to let any of my personal feelings engage in that. And I, Ms. Rogers, I don't know that we've ever met before, a couple of years ago before COVID, I did meet your children who attended an event and they're very well behaved. So in addition to that, it looks like you're raising some good kids. But I, I've never met Ms. Rogers. I don't know her, but when I look, when I look at what you've done on your resume, I find, I find Ms. Rogers to be qualified and I don't have any reason to vote against Ms. Rogers. I'm certainly not going to vote against her because her, actually, her husband and I have disagreed on many different issues and how to go about it over the years. We, we've talked it out and sometimes you just have to agree to disagree. But we do come from different political angles and political thoughts, but again, I'm not going to hold that against somebody. This is a land bank appointment. And so if the mayor nominates somebody that I believe is qualified, then I'm going to vote yes for that appointment. And I really do think we've got to quit. Not only do we have this political divide between Republicans and Democrats, which our council, in the eight years I have been on here, this is the first time where I've ever had this kind of animosity on our council and where we're actually at having people come up and attack other people. I believe that everyone in here, in this room, has a good heart and has good intentions and truly wants the best thing for, for Omaha. And we all just kind of, I think, have different ideas of how we get to that same end goal. That's what we do, but we talk, sometimes we agree, sometimes Sarah. Sometimes Sarah Johnson actually says, sends me an email and says, "Thank you. We actually agree on something." Nine times out of ten, we might not, but we're civil. And I, I don't like this civility. I don't like that there's a motion to deny Ms. Rogers, who hasn't done anything at all to merit getting a denial. So I really think we, I don't want to see these appointments now become another divisive issue on this council to make us look no better than what half the time the legislature looks like and exactly what Washington DC looks like. We're better than that. Omaha is better than that. District 7 is better than that. District 2 is better than that. We all got, we gotta stop. And I, I just don't want to see this council spiral into the divisiveness that we see in our, in our capitals. So Ms. Rogers, I, I support your appointment. And I thank you for the work that you've previously done. And I don't know if Ms. Brown's here, but Ms. Weston, look at your resume too. And I know we've gotten to know each other a little bit, but thank you for everything that you've done. And I look at what you've done on your resume, and it's fabulous. So I just wish we could all work together, and I think we could accomplish a lot more together than somehow I'm supposed to figure out who this in crowd is that I'm not supposed to appoint anymore. And I don't know who's on what team. But I really think if we could all just maybe play on the same team together, so that I'm not having to figure out by emails who's in what, who's on what team and we can't support each other. It's just, it's wrong and stupid. And we're not going to accomplish any good in this city if we continue to spiral in that direction. So I, I hope that we can appoint Ms. Rogers, because the board has been needing and appointed, has been in need of this position to be filled for months. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Rogers, I'm going to say that my decision to deny this appointment had nothing, absolutely nothing to do with you, nor your qualifications. I will repeat what my reason was for denial. And it was because a five-day notice of a committee appointment simply does not allow time for a city council representative to go out into the community and talk about this so that things that Ms. Milton mentioned regarding divisiveness could have been avoided. This process in which we currently operate regarding appointments needs to be looked at, needs to be examined if our goal is to create harmony amongst all citizens of Omaha, Nebraska. We could have done that had I been giving more than five-day notice of this appointment to go into the community and say, "You were appointed by the mayor." That is all of what my intentions were today. Thank you.
Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Rogers, can you come down, please? Well, welcome to the big show, right? And, uh, I guess I gotta wait for you to get your name and address.
Charlon Rogers, S-H-A-R-L-O-N, 2616 North 32nd Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68111.
Okay, so for transparency, you and I have never met, obviously, but nice to meet you. You just happened to step into the, the line of fire of which I said of, "I'm going to hold these boards accountable." And one of them is showing up. They're important. No matter what the duty is, they're important. So, and I'm going to ask you, because I don't know. I tried to look it up, and I just couldn't find it. There was a mention of some outside board or something to do with the land bank that you didn't show up for the meetings. Can you explain that to me, so I understand that, please?
Sure, I would be happy to. And I apologize, I'm not exactly sure where the misinformation came from, but even I checked it with Shannon to make sure that I was correct. I have attended all of the advisory meetings that were scheduled.
Okay.
So I have not missed any. And as a matter of fact, above and beyond that, I actually attended one of the land bank meetings so I could be better versed at the functionality of that as well.
Okay, so you, so you know, and everybody else knows, that's the most important part on these boards, right? You gotta show up.
Absolutely.
It trickles down, and sometimes they get to us. So I, I appreciate hearing that. Thanks for coming on down. You need to stretch your legs anyway, right? Like we all do. So I don't, I don't have any other questions, but if you wanted to add something, I'll let you.
Sure. Um, you know, I was sitting there, and I listened to everything that everyone had to say. I appreciate you saying that, Councilwoman Johnson. There comes a time, this is new to me, unlike my husband, but to hear certain statements about you, that feels like it's something related to your character, is difficult. I've spent my whole life trying to be an example and a participant in my community to display the passion I had for making the world a better place. And as a mom, I've taken that to the hilt. I didn't even let my children come today, because we've been trying to explain to them the political process, because I wasn't sure what I'd bring them into. I can tell you I'm proud of my record, but I can also tell you I'm proud of my community, in spite of hearing some hard things today. We are not monolithic. People get to say what they want to say, and it's part of the reasons that we've made the, the accomplishments that we've made. And I'm proud of that as well. So I don't take it as an attack. I think that people should be able to say what they want to say. But I can tell you personally, I am the first college graduate of my family, come from Arkansas, hence you, you might hear the twang. Left to attend Howard University. And then I came to Omaha for my first job, which I have worked with the health system, or had worked with the health system here for 29 years. It was when I, in support of my husband, wanted to let him do what he had been elected to do even more than we had been doing, that I decided I want to reevaluate my work-life balance with my kids. We don't have family here. And with me looking at that, I made a decision I wanted to go into real estate, which was a transition from my healthcare. I went specifically into oncology because of the way that I saw it ravage so many of our families. It doesn't matter what color. And so even after I'd done that, and I was still passionate about that, I made the decision that I wanted that better work-life balance. There were a number of social injustices that we all witnessed during the time, because when I made the decision to leave, I didn't know that COVID was going to be a factor, like none of us did. But that is what derailed my focused attention to finish my real estate license. I tried to be very targeted and intentional when I make decisions. When I applied for the land bank, it did not say I had to have a real estate background, but I too thought that will augment my ability to perform on the land bank. And so that was something I planned to do. But I also still had to balance what I was trying to do in my family, my concerns, my fears for our safety. And so that got put on the back burner, because I then became equally passionate about trying to help my community get through this pandemic crisis. So that's where I've turned my attention. I still have all intentions to pursue and finish my real estate license. I am not someone who finds myself starting something that I don't finish. So you can check that off unofficially, that that will be done in the future. If I were given an opportunity to perform on the land bank, I would not, I would not approach that any different than I have anything else. I do my homework. I attend the meetings. I use my critical thinking skills and my analytical skills to try and ask intentional questions. And I try to find out the desires of the people that I represent in this case. And that is what I think represents what anyone should do when they are given an opportunity like this. I appreciate everything that you all do. Again, I appreciate the comments that have come to me today, because if I were given the opportunity, I'd be better versed going into that position, who I needed to reach out to. I would just ask my community to give some grace, because just because you have not been in the public forum doesn't mean that you can't perform. I was in charge of multimillion-dollar budgets. So I would love to bring that same experience to my community, as I've already started to do, to, to do good in my community. I would just pray that we could get through this in a way that I listen to you, you listen to me, and give me and anyone else who may want to make that decision to come from an environment like I was in, a chance in trying to be an active member of our community. I don't know what the final decision will be, but at the end of the day, we always agree to disagree. And at the end of the day, Councilwoman Johnson, I know that you and I still will work together. And I appreciate the opportunity. I don't know Ms. Weston, but I know her name. So I look forward to it. I'm glad to know that we are church members. So I'm, I'm, I look forward to meeting anyone in this room. I can talk to anyone in this room without animosity. Just thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to your vote.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't done yet.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. President. I'm done with you. Thank you, sorry. Yes, ma'am. I, I, I did want to get that question answered. You answered it, and I didn't know, but I did know that you wanted some rebuttal time. So that's why I called you down. You know, I spoke to some colleagues. No, I shouldn't say colleagues. I spoke to some members that work for the city and the administration in the hallway today. And I said, "I, I think we're really close on some of these appointments, but we really have to stick to our guns and make sure they're going to show up. Make sure, obviously, number one, they live in that area." I said, "But I, I think the biggest problem is," and it's true, "I, I think the bubble of candidates is here. It, it doesn't need to be here, but it needs to go from here to here." And, and I think if we continue at least asking questions and finding out who can serve on these boards, because as we know, we got other board positions to fill, and it's not easy. I, I think we can get there. I will say, I read through quickly the applications that we had for the three members. And I too would think all three of them were, to be honest, above and beyond qualified. And, and I, I certainly don't want to downplay the land bank, right? No disrespect, Executive Director Snow. The land bank's important, but I promise you, I've never had a, a person that I ran into that said, "Hey, get to work on that land bank." Right? So, so no offense. It's important, but it, it's not like roads and police and fire and getting our trash picked up. And so there's sometimes battles you, you're willing to, to get into. And with that being said, the, the last name that was brought forward, that was tough. That was tough, right? And I, and I don't know if we deny your application. The next person will have a favorable outcome, but I, I won't put myself through that position again. And not because my wife's still mad at me for not selecting Ben Gray, but she is. But sometimes this is what you do. You, you, you fight with your colleagues on, on certain things and, and not to, to belabor that, but I wouldn't want the person I ran against on that board either. But ultimately, I don't think, even if we throw these three names out and we get five more candidates, certainly Councilmember Johnson, because she, I mean, she's got a fight on her hand, right? Her district encompasses North Omaha, mine's South Omaha. We have a lot of the, the same problems and, and, and we need to continuously change for the better. So with all that being said, we'll see how the vote goes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I, I agree with the comment, and I think I observed this last time too, that it would be beneficial to increase, in, in your words, the bubble of candidates and the pool of candidates being considered for all of the boards and commissions across all of our city responsibilities. But I will say today, I have had the pleasure of meeting Charlon Rogers before. In fact, I've known her for about 20 years. And as you can tell by the remarks she just gave, she's smart and intelligent and thoughtful. She's qualified, she does her homework. And with the emotions she displayed there, obviously committed to the future of our city. So I have no, no second thoughts about approving her appointment here today. And I can also say, she does have well-behaved kids. With that, Mr. Hart, and you're late, son.
Thank you, Mr. President. I put my light on, I think, right before Council Vice President Palermo called up Ms. Rogers. And, and the reason I put it on is because I was sitting here thinking of, of a movie called Citizen Ruth. It was actually directed by Omaha's own Alexander Payne, but Citizen Ruth, Ruth, the main character was basically a political football. And both sides were kind of going at it to the point where she became invisible and just got up and walked away. And I thought, how unfortunate it would be if we didn't have Mrs. Rogers come and speak to us. And so thank you, Vinnie, for having her come down. And Charlon, the, the, your, your, your poise, your commentary are exactly what, the kind of people that we want serving on these boards and commissions. And I, I'm so glad that you got an opportunity to get up and, and, and speak to us and tell us about who you are, because it's important. And I will be, I will be nominating, I will make the motion to nominate you for the land bank board after this other vote goes down.
The motion for denial.
I know, I said, after, there was a second for the denial.
Let me finish. The motion for denial died for lack of a second. So you made a motion.
Oh, I thought you said.
All right, well, seconded.
I'm sorry. I thought you seconded it. I thought, I didn't hear you say it died for lack of a second. Then I will make the motion to approve.
And I already seconded it. And Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. My colleagues have spoken. I also have read the resumes. And I've actually corresponded with one of the applicants, Ms. Weston, on a couple of other issues. And with Ms. Rogers and Ms. Weston, there is no question in my mind that I think these ladies can fill this role well. The mayor has nominated Ms. Rogers, and I appreciate you coming down today. I too have never met you, but I, I've read your background and your resume, and, and there is no question in my mind, you along with the others, are capable of filling this role. And as my colleague, Vinnie Palermo, had asked you about your attendance to these, to the meetings, that you cleared the record on that. So I appreciated that. And I have no doubt in my mind that if you're approved today, that in light of the testimony of others, that you're in the same church as Ms. Weston, maybe talk to your pastor and go have a cup of coffee, introduce yourselves. I know I've spoken, my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, about this, and we had good candid discussion on it. And with, the easiest thing to do is the hardest thing to do. And that's sit down and communicate. And there's obvious issues going on in District 2, as there are other districts as well. But I don't give up on that hope that communication and sitting down and going through issues that you may disagree on, that you never take down that barrier to talk. And so I would suggest that that's something you would do in the future, because I'm going to support your nomination of this position. And the reason is, again, I think everyone that has applied is qualified. But I'm look, looking forward to watching you in the days and years ahead on the land bank board, if my colleagues support you, that you can come back and say, "Hey, Councilman Bagley." that you can come back and say, hey, Councilman Bagley, in a couple of years, I've had coffee with people, I've talked to people that were opposed to me, and you have a fair shake. I know my daughter had just left, she was sitting in the front row. She's on break from school. And she would be the first one to tell you, hey, I don't agree with my old man on a few things, right? She would set her dad straight and tell me, as a 25-year-old young woman, on what her thoughts are on politics or anything in general. Your husband's an elected official, a member of the community. I met him once at Creighton University, when I was up there for the ribbon cutting for the new building up there by the ball field. I have no doubt that by listening to you here today and reading, again, your resume, that I believe you'll be open-minded, and you'll listen to people in the community, and you'll try to bridge a gap. You're not going to agree with everything your husband does, just like my daughter and I don't. And that's okay. But I feel that you'll bring a good voice to the land bank board. And I take you at your word today that you'll obviously attend the meetings, but importantly, you'll talk to people that maybe don't agree with you. So I want to let you know that I'm going to support you, and I'll look forward to the progress in the days and years that come for you, if my colleagues agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. While that was really a tough decision today, but I'm very confident that Ms. Rogers and I will be able to work very effectively together. But I still want to raise awareness to this body that we have a problem with appointments. How they're communicated. Yes, the charter allows the mayor to make that appointment. But what is the impact of those appointments to the committees or to the communities when we have individuals coming up in opposition? That's unfair to Ms. Rogers, that's unfair to the community, it's unfair to me. I'm simply saying, more time needed to be given to me, a city council representative for District Two, since this will ultimately impact the district, for me to have communicated that with the constituents. We still have that problem. Although we vote on this, we still have that problem. And if we turn a naked eye to how we go about dealing with appointments, we will have this conversation again and again. And the person on the other end, that is the appointee, will be receiving the brunt end of the stick. So it's really, really nice that we came to a conclusion, but we really didn't, because these appointments have far-reaching impact on the community when we give them five-day notice of what the appointment or who the appointment is going to be. And I'd like for this body to take that under advisement and consider doing something on a more permanent basis to address that issue, because it is a huge issue, not only for District Two, but for the whole city of Omaha. And as Dr. Thompson indicated, he had a board that was supposed to have had 11 members. And no one was able to fill those shoes. Thank you.
Thank you, no further lights. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President. Item 70 is approved, or six to one. Item 72, in ordinance to approve the Functional Employees Group Collective Bargaining Agreement for the years 2022 through 2024, Personnel Board recommends approval.
The vote on number 72 is today. I would just note, it takes a super majority of council members to approve this item. Second, roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President. Item 72 is approved, seven to zero. Item 73, in ordinance to change City Council District boundaries, is amendment of the whole, requested by councilmembers Johnson and Bagley.
The vote on number 73 is today. I would note, there's an amendment of the whole. I'll second that. And I will offer, before I call the roll, seeing no further lights, that I would just thank the council members for working on this particular agenda item together. We did have a compressed timeframe to work on this issue and get it resolved by the end of the year under state law. But I think we went about it in a nonpartisan, apolitical, and transparent way. We were responsive to the public input we received last week. I want to thank councilmembers Bagley and Johnson for proposing this amendment of the whole, which I think does do that. And most of all, I want to thank Chief of Staff Jim Douding, who spent a lot of time and a lot of work with all council members to put this together for us and to have this on our agenda today. And if approved, will be in effect in the next two weeks. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. You kind of stole my thunder there. I wanted to thank Chief of Staff Douding. I learned a lot from him in this process, as well as my colleagues, that you'd give and take a little bit, and then we got the finished product here today. And especially to Councilmember Johnson for getting together and working on this. And it was a pleasure doing that. So I think this is a good finished product. Hopefully, after the vote here, it'll show that it is. Thanks. And that is a motion to accept number 73. See, I'm getting better at this.
Seventy-three A.
Amendment of the hold's already been made, right? Long day, thank you.
There was a motion in a second, right? All right, thank you. Now for the lights, roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President. Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 74, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for the case of Anthony Maggot versus City of Omaha and David Frashone in the amount of $49,000.
Public hearing on vote on number 74 is today. Proponents, please.
Mackusie City Attorney here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President. Item 74 is approved, seven to zero. Item 75, in ordinance to approve the Highlander Phase Four Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 75 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Sean James with the law firm of Smith Slusky, Porin and Rogers, 3555 Farnham Street, Suite 1000. We've moved. 68131. I'm also here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 76, in ordinance to approve a real estate purchase and sale agreement with First National Bank of Omaha for the transfer and sale of a parking garage generally located at 15th and Capitol Streets in an amount of $15,649,581.
Public hearing on number 76 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Anderson.
Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, City of Omaha, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Street. As a follow-up to some of the questions this morning, that I'd give a little bit more detail. But in the interest of time, I won't belabor a whole lot of issues. You may recall, back in 2018, there was a redevelopment plan and subsequent redevelopment agreement approved by City Council for the Builders District. The property that I show highlighted here in yellow is what I'll refer to as the 7th Street, 17th Street parking lot. That parking lot is currently owned by First National. The employees of First National currently park in that lot. And so in order for the developer obligations and the city obligations that were identified in that redevelopment plan and subsequent redevelopment agreement, acquisition of that property needed to take place. Acquisition of the property would then displace those First National Bank employees. So we were approached regarding negotiations associated with putting those employees in the city's parking garage, parking structure at Park Seven. The property there is currently, the land underneath the structure is currently owned by First National anyway. They hold a number of what we call cards or contracts for individual spaces within that garage already today. And so it only furthered the conversation to consider disposition of that property, sale of that structure that the city owns to First National, that they would then be able to control and make advantage of for their employees without having to come to the city every time they needed a new card or needed to change cards. They would have full access and control of that structure and that property at that point. So we went into negotiations. First National has also, as part of this process, committed to relocating 300 jobs downtown, which has sort of compounded their parking demand and their parking need. So throughout this process, we negotiated the real estate purchase and sale agreement that is before you all today. The city would receive $15.7 million-ish. That's $8 million in cash. And the real property up in the Builders District, which would then allow the developer in the Builders District to continue to satisfy their developer obligations identified in that redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement. The 17th Street parking lot is 129,510 square feet, consists of 279 stalls. That's what the city would acquire. The parking structure, Park Seven, consists of 238,155 square feet and contains approximately 693 stalls. That is what is being sold. So with that being said, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Troy, I'm sorry, I think two questions. One, I was writing when you said, what was, you were talking about the surface lot. What were the dimensions of that?
The surface lot is approximately 129,510 square feet, has approximately 279 stalls.
Okay. And then, so Park Seven is really, I mean, I think when you look at the picture, you think it's the whole parking structure that also goes along with the Doubletree. And that's not right, correct?
That's correct. There's actually, it's kind of hard to see. Maybe we could zoom in here. Yes, there are two parking structures there. We only own the parking structure there on the corner.
I wanted to make sure that that was clear, because there was some question about parking for the hotel and some of those functions as well, too. So I wanted to make sure we had that delineation of, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for that overview, Troy. I was, I thought it was important we do that, because it's unusual. We have a sale of a garage like this, and it was helpful to see the map and see how the rationale behind this item. So thanks for staying. All right. Next item, please.
Non-action items, items 77 through 117, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing at our vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second. And before I call roll calls, I'll make sure I wish everybody a Happy Holiday and a Happy New Year's. Roll call.
Roe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo. Mr. President. Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:23.